Good evening and welcome. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Butler Barlow, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. We gather today in humility and faith, thankful for all of the blessings and mindful of all of the challenges in our communities. We ask for guidance and strength, for courage and wisdom as we meet tonight. Help us to remember to act in love and with grace in service to our city, remembering the needs of our neighbors and treating all people as we would want to be treated. Give us patience and understanding to face the challenges of these days with grace. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of May the 15th, 2024 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council, the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council, the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Council, Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
There are motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Bennett, Secretary. Second from Councilman Bennett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Will now move to approval of the minutes from the March 20, 2024 work session and regular meeting, and a motion would be in order. Vice Mayor Ward?
No, I'm sorry.
We got a motion for approval from Vice Mayor Ward. Councilman Williams?
Second it, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We do have two special presentations this evening. Our first is a proclamation in recognition of National Emergency Medical Services Week, and following that, an additional proclamation in recognition of National Public Works Week.
Mayor, Members of Council, Vice Mayor, as Mayor stated, there is two proclamations. The first proclamation is in recognition of National Emergency Medical Services Week, which extends from May 19th through May 25th throughout the Commonwealth and the United States. Here to accept the proclamation are Fire Chief Mike Baraki and Assistant Fire Chief Keith Johnson.
Madam Clerk, please present the proclamation.
Whereas in 1974, President Gerald Ford authorized the recognition of emergency medical services personnel to acknowledge their role in ensuring the health and welfare of communities. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of a wide variety of trained professionals, including paramedics, firefighters, police officers, emergency nurses, emergency dispatchers, educators, administrators, emergency physicians, and others. And whereas, emergency medical services employees engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills in order to provide a vital service to our citizens. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services practitioners by designating Emergency Medical Services Week, in keeping with this year's theme, honoring our past, forging our future. Now therefore, I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, do hereby proclaim May the 19th, 2024 through May the 25th, 2024, as Emergency Medical Services Week, and call upon all residents to express their gratitude to these dedicated public servants for their contributions in keeping Suffolk healthy and safe. And witness whereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed this 15th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2024.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, I'm honored to accept this proclamation along with Battalion Chief Keith Johnson. Here in the City of Suffolk, we have the most compassionate, well-trained, experienced, and caring EMS providers in Hampton Roads and in the Commonwealth. National EMS Week is designed to highlight the quality care, compassion, and medicine that is delivered each and every day and night to the citizens who have that vital gap of being at their home, place of work, or area of travel, but need immediate professional care and treatment as they do not have the ability to get to the hospital on their own. This year is the 50th anniversary of National EMS Week, and with the city celebrating our 50th anniversary, it is an excellent opportunity to share in this 50th year celebration. The theme is honoring our past and forging our future. On behalf of our operational medical director, Dr. Carl Wenzel, and the over 300 advanced EMTs and paramedics of Suffolk Fire and Rescue who operate eight advanced ALS, advanced life supporter ALS ambulances 24/7, they deliver the highest level of advanced medicine and clinical interventions, just as if you were in the emergency department. And we celebrate National EMS Week by bringing awareness to the fantastic work and care provided by the members of Suffolk Fire and Rescue. From a highly trained and experienced 911 dispatchers who deliver the calming care over the phone by providing pre-arrival EMS instructions, to our Suffolk police officers who provide fantastic care, we are just one system providing care. We partner with Centerra, Bon Secours, CHKD, Riverside Regional Health, and the United States Navy as our medic units routinely treat and transport our citizens to nine area hospitals. Our EMS personnel serve on several regional boards to improve treatment and arrival to door intervention times for STEMI's, brain bleeds, trauma care, active shooter and active threat medicine, and whole blood administration. In addition, we routinely partner with our regional EMS council, TMS, and Night Gail Air Ambulance to deliver the best advanced medical care in the region. We routinely provide and receive automatic and mutual aid units from Isle of Wight, Chesapeake, and Portsmouth. We are committed to delivering the highest and most valued EMS care to all of our citizens, and we appreciate all of Council's recognition to this proclamation. I will now turn over the podium to Battalion Chief Keith Johnson, our EMS bureau chief, for his remarks.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of City Council, I along with Chief Rocky, am honored to be able to represent our world-class fire department as we receive this proclamation. Suffolk Fire and Rescue, just like our city, continues to see growth like never before. In 2023, we responded for a total of 19,087 calls for service. Out of those calls, 14,086 were directly related to EMS services. To put things in perspective, that's 74% of every call answered by Suffolk Fire and Rescue was related somehow to EMS. I believe that it's essential to highlight some statistical data as well. Medic One, which runs right down the street here out of Station One, continues to be our busiest medic as it responded to 4,026 calls for service last year. The eight ALS medics that Chief Rocky spoke of made a total of 10,561 transports to our local hospitals. I also want to highlight a few of our major achievements over the last year. We're pleased to announce that we have added a full-time paramedic-only program. Currently, we have seven full-time paramedics on our force, with two more just recently scheduled to start over the next month. This is a brand-new concept for a department, but it's been very well received. Suffolk Fire and Rescue is always striving to improve our service delivery. March 19th of this year, we proudly introduced the whole blood administration program. This tool gives our ALS providers the opportunity to provide early blood transfusions to patients who are suffering from hemorrhagic shock. One other major accomplishment this year has been the addition of our dedicated bariatric unit, adding that to our ambulance fleet. This unit is designed specifically to safely load and transport oversized patients. It's been used many times in our city, and has also been used as a regional asset through mutual aid responses. Lastly, we're excited to announce the launch of our community paramedic program that is scheduled to start July 1st of this year. This program will combine our paramedic resources with the City of Suffolk and pair them with a clinician that's going to come from Western Tidewater Community Services Board. These efforts will be focused on improving our responses to medical health crisis, and also connecting citizens in the community with resources that they may be in need of in order to improve their quality of life. I want to thank you all for taking the time to allow us to give a few remarks. Chief Rocky and I, representing all of Suffolk Fire and Rescue, are honored to accept this proclamation as we proclaim the 50th Annual National EMS Week. Thank you, and God bless.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, our second proclamation is in recognition of National Public Works Week, which also extends from May 19th through May 25th throughout the Commonwealth and the United States. With us this evening is to accept the proclamation is Director of Public Works, Robert Lewis, and several of his staff members. And I believe, Robert, you may have some graduates from the city's Public Works Academy.
Madam Clerk, will you please present the proclamation?
Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vitally important to sustainable and resilient communities, in addition to the public health and well-being of the residents of Suffolk. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be possible without the dedicated efforts of the public works professionals, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, solid waste systems, and public buildings. And whereas, it is in the community's interest to gain knowledge about the importance of public works and public works programs. And whereas, the year 2024 marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. Now therefore, I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, do hereby proclaim May the 19th, 2024 through May the 25th, 2024, as National Public Works Week. And witness whereof, I herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed this 15th day of May in the year of our Lord, 2024.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, and to our guests this evening. It is certainly my honor and my privilege to be standing before you today as the representative of our Public Works Department. We are 249 men and women strong who stand on the front lines to serve our city every day of the year. We are often unrecognized as first responders, but our congressional representatives a few years ago recognized how important public works is in our country, and have since made us nationally declared first responders. You see to me, all three of my right hands? Because obviously, I'm not right, I'm not left-handed. These are the men and women, and again, that assist in making sure our department functions. We often say, at the very least, we touch every family, every individual in our city, at least once a week. But what I will share with you, I dare reckon that we probably touch every individual in our city at least once a day, if not more, because of the services we provide. One of the things we have just completed is we've just completed our annual Public Works Academy. And what I'd like to do, I've invited a few folks with me, anyone who has participated in one of the previous Public Works Academies. So we just finished our third annual Public Works Academy. Would you please stand, and let's be recognized, all my Public Works Academy folks? Thank you so much. And you do notice at least two of those were up on Council dais. What I'd like to share with you, one of the questions always becomes is to why do we do Public Works Week? Well, I mentioned, we are 249 men and women strong, but now over the last three years, we've added about 75 additional people to our family. And while they don't go out in the street and pick up trash and patch potholes and clean ditches, what they do for us is they're goodwill ambassadors. There is so much misinformation floating around, and these men and women have the ability, when they hear that, to say, "Well, you know what? I went to Public Works Academy." And that's not exactly the way it works. And that's exactly what we hope to do. I do want to share with you just two comments we received as a follow-up about why we think this is so important. First individual says, "I think that every concerned citizen should attend at least once, and civic leaders should probably attend every so many years, to stay current and to be able to share information with their members. My biggest takeaway is that the leadership is vested, knowledgeable, and engaged." And the second individual said, "I would like to say that this academy was very well worth the time and effort. Thank you for your insight on how important this knowledge, regulations, emergency planning, funding, and environment and engineering processes are to our city. Everyone did a great job with their presentations. The training was extremely helpful in learning decision-making techniques that directly affect citizens every day in our city." And again, we appreciate that feedback. So again, thank you very much for your support. Again, the men and women at Public Works stand ready to serve our city at the moment's notice. Mayor, thank you very much. If anyone would like to come to the Academy, come on up. We'd love to get our Academy folks up here. Absolutely. Come on down. Come on in. We'll fit you right in. All right. All right, at this time, we will consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. Questions and requests for information on specific agenda items can be addressed during the consideration of the consent agenda after the agenda speakers. Therefore, a motion would be in order to adopt the remainder of the agenda as presented. Councilman Johnson?
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Councilman Williams?
Second it, Mayor.
We got a motion from Councilman Johnson for approval, and a second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers at this time?
No, Mayor.
Hearing none, please present the items for consideration.
Consent agenda item number seven, in ordinance to accept and appropriate funds donated to the City of Suffolk Department of Parks and Recreation. Consent agenda item number eight, in ordinance to accept and appropriate additional funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation State of Good Repair Program, and to transfer local urban maintenance funds from the bridge replacement on Pittman Town Road over Mill Swamp.
Mr. Manager, would you please provide an overview of the items?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, item seven, the city has received a $3,750 donation from Mr. Carter Hotchkiss to the Department of Parks and Recreation. The funding will be used to purchase and install two park benches at the new downtown festival park. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the general fund operating budget by the $3,750, and there is no local match. In regards to item eight, the city has received $101,280 in additional funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation State of Good Repair Program for the bridge replacement at Pittman Town Road over Mill Swamp. The current bridge has load restrictions for commercial emergency vehicles and school buses. A local match of $537,792 is required and is available through the transfer of local urban maintenance funds from the FY 2023-2024 road maintenance fund budget. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the FY 2023-2024 capital projects fund by the $101,280, and also authorize the transfer of the $537,792 from the road maintenance fund to the capital projects fund.
If there are no questions about the items, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
And a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Vice Mayor Ward?
Second.
A second from Vice Mayor Ward. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Will now move to our public hearings for this evening. Our first public
Our first public hearing is in ordinance to amend section 26-2 to amend the boundaries of voting precincts in the Cypress Borough. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Deputy City Manager Kevin Hughes will provide the staff report. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, for your consideration is a slight modification at the JFK precinct, voter precinct in the White Marsh voter precinct, both in the Cypress Borough. This is our current voter precinct map that you're familiar with. I'll zoom in to the areas that we're discussing this evening. So in the yellow dashed on the visual in front of you, that is the JFK precinct as it exists today. Voters vote at JFK Middle School, 2325 East Washington Street, and then outlined in purple is the current White Marsh precinct, and they vote at New First Baptist Church at 1105 Hosier Road. I'll draw your attention to where the yellow and the purple lines touch, because that's where we're really looking to make some modifications here. So zooming into where that yellow and purple line touch, we've outlined essentially two neighborhoods or portions of neighborhoods where voters live just over kind of the JFK precinct into the White Marsh. And what that does, it has those folks that are highlighted in red when they go to vote. They're going all the way down Hosier Road to vote at the church versus the closer location at JFK Middle School. I know we've heard a request for that and why city council wanted to motion for this public hearing. And so those areas in red are really the voters that we're identifying and that will be impacted, I think positively, if this moves forward. So if you look at the numbers at the very top of this slide, you'll see that the current precinct and the number of voters, you've got 2,651 in JFK and then 1,164 in White Marsh. That area that we just looked at in that previous slide, that identifies 371 voters. And so if that line were to shift and then those that were in those red areas become part of the new JFK precinct, that would be a little over 3,000 voters and then White Marsh would be left with 793. That still works within the requirements. I think you have to have 500 voters in a precinct, so we're still legal there. We did post this on the website and we've had a display board in the lobby for about a month now, a little over a month actually. We've received no comments and happy to answer any questions you may have following the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, would you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have anyone present who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, an ordinance has been presented for consideration. What's your pleasure, Councilman Bennett?
Move for approval.
Motion for approval from Councilman Bennett. Councilman Williams?
Second it, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is in ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk to change the zoning from B2, General Commercial District Zoning District, to M2, Heavy Industrial Zoning District, conditional for property located in 1941 Willroy Road. Zoning map 26, parcel 22A, asterisk 22B, asterisk 22C, account number 301260000. And this is RZN 2023-11, conditional. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Kevin Wine, Director of Planning and Community Development will provide the staff report. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. As the mayor stated, this rezoning request, RZN 2023-011, conditional, is a request to change the zoning map, the zoning designation from B2, General Commercial Zoning, to M2, Heavy Industrial, Conditional Zoning District for property located on Willroy Road, specifically tax map parcel 26*22A*,22B*,22C. The Comprehensive Plan identifies this property as being located in the city's central growth area designated as a suburban use district. The site is located directly on Willroy and it's adjacent to a variety of zoning districts and uses, including former restaurants, zoned B2 Commercial to the west, the Children's Center zoned O and I to the east, industrial uses zoned M1 and M2 to the south, and to the north, the site is bounded by the Nansman River. The Hampton Road Sanitation District proposes rezoning the site from B2 to M2 to allow for an above-ground storage tank used by Wright. This tank will allow for offline storage in an effort to provide needed pressure reductions downstream of the facility throughout HRSD's wastewater network within the City of Suffolk. So a little background and why they are proposing it here on the site. HRSD is obligated to meet wet weather standards in accordance with the Environmental Protection Agency and the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality Regulations by December 2027. The proposed pressure-reducing station and offline storage facility will provide capacity needed during wet water, wet weather storm events that result in system overflows. The facility will temporarily direct wastewater flow into the storage facility, which will be stored and then released back into the system once capacity of the wastewater force main decreases to normal levels. The temporary relief of pressure off the force main during wet weather events will help prevent sanitary sewer overflows that have been documented at least six times since, into Shingle Creek since 2009. As a part of the application, HRSD has provided an analysis addressing the need for the facility, particularly in this location as it relates to their system. It also details measures that they will undertake regarding odor control. Here you can see elevations that have been provided by HRSD demonstrating what the proposed facility will look like. The pressure-reducing station will be located on the front of the property, and that will largely shield the offline storage tank at the property's rear. They also provided en proffered enhanced landscaping, which is depicted here, here in a mature state, so you can see what it looks like once it matures on the site. So staff has reviewed this request in accordance with the provisions contained within the UDO and the 2035 Comp Plan. The proposal aligns with the key objectives outlined within Chapter 5 of the Comprehensive Plan related to enhancement of the city's existing wastewater system and continued support of HRSD in pursuit of needed improvements to their regional system. Additionally, the proposal will accomplish the goal of continuing to strive for an environmentally sound and efficient solid waste system. So as it relates to proffers, this is a conditional rezoning, so the applicant is proffering certain conditions along with their application. The first being that they're proffering all other M2 uses out. So there are a lot of uses within the M2 district that you can do as a matter of right. They are proffering that this property will only be utilized for a wastewater pumping station and pressure-reducing storage tank and any required ancillary uses associated specifically with it. Additionally, the provided elevations and layout have been proffered as depicted in this presentation. So staff is recommending approval of this application and the planning commission, at their meeting on April 16th, by a vote of eight to zero, voted to approve a resolution recommending approval of this application with the proffers associated with it. That concludes my presentation on this item. I will stand by the conclusion of the public hearing for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address, and that is to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council and guests. My name is Laura Kirkwood. I work for Hampton Road Sanitation District located at 1434 Air Rail Avenue in Virginia Beach, and I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight, here to support this very important project that is, that will help us manage our wet weather pressures and to ultimately serve our ratepayers and to help serve your citizens. Again, thank you so much for your time. I'm inviting up our consulting engineer to tell you a little bit more about our project, Chris Wilson with Brown &amp; Caldwell. I'm going to welcome him up to the podium. Thank you so much.
Again, my name's Chris Wilson with Brown &amp; Caldwell. My address is 301 Bendix Road, Suite 400, Virginia Beach, Virginia. Again, many of the items that I was going to talk about today were already covered by the report, so I can make it a lot briefer. A few things that I wanted to touch on that, just to emphasize, this facility is a pressure-reducing station and a storage tank. The PRS, we call them, will be used much more frequently during, you know, rain events. The storage tank will be used very infrequently during extreme events. It's a completely enclosed tank. There'll be a roof on it, odor control scrubbing system, carbon, a granularly activated carbon scrubber, so there should not be any noxious emissions from the tank when it is used during those extreme events. The PRS is going to be largely automated. There will be HRSD staff that comes by to maintain it, but it will be largely automated facility. The tank behind the PRS is actually going to be lower. It's set down into the ground, buried partially, so it will be lower than the building in front of it, obscured from the road. And earth tone and color, as we've worked with city staff to make sure that it blends in. This is a really important project for HRSD's Regional Wet Weather Management Plan. They're obligated to do it as part of a consent decree with the US EPA, Department of Justice and the Virginia DEQ. It has to be completed by 2027, and it's part of HRSD's program to reduce sanitary sewer overflows by 70% in a five-year event, a five-year rainfall event. In summary, you know, this required project has many enhanced architectural landscape features, the camouflage tank, and of course, the benefit to the City of Suffolk pump stations to reduce sanitary sewer overflows. It's a valuable asset to the health of the residents of Suffolk and the protection of the environment. We hope that you'll support the rezoning application. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker to speaker in favor of this ordinance. Do we have anyone else present who would like to speak in favor? Hearing none, do we have anyone present who would like to speak in opposition? Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, questions, comments or a motion? Councilman Bennett?
Move for approval.
We have a motion for approval from Councilman Bennett. Councilman Fawcett?
I second his motion.
Second from Councilman Fawcett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next public hearing is in ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish surface mining operations, burrow pit, on property located at 12,000 Wyandotte Trail, zoning map 59, parcel four, account number 152491400. This is CUP 2023-25. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Again, Kevin Wine, Director of Planning and Community Development will provide the staff report. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. Once again, this is a conditional use permit, CUP 2023-025, Wyandotte Trail, request for a conditional use permit which would authorize the establishment of a burrow pit or surface mining operation at 12,000 Wyandotte Trail. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as being located outside of the city's growth areas and is designated as a rural agricultural use district. Further, the Comprehensive Plan designates this property as an area with high biodiversity. The Department of Conservation and Recreation identifies the southern portion of the site as a natural heritage site, as it is located immediately north of the South Key Sand Hills Natural Area Preserve, which is the last remaining natural stand of longleaf pine trees in The site is comprised of 338 acres and consists of forested and timbered lands. The agriculturally zoned parcel is bounded by the Blackwater River and Southampton County to the north and west, the South Key Sand Hills owned and managed by the Department of Conservation and Recreation to the south, and forested land, farm fields and residential uses is zoned agricultural to the east. Here you have the conceptual layout provided in support of the application. The applicant here proposes to establish several burrow pits on the property, three in total, to mine specialty types of sands. Burrow pit one is proposed to be 122 and a half acres in size. Burrow pit two is proposed to be 35.7 acres in size, and burrow pit three is proposed to be 53.8 acres in size, totaling 212 acres of the overall site. The applicant proposes to operate Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and Saturday, 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM, with approximately eight employees on the site. Upon completion of the surface mining use, the operation plan states that reclamation shall be completed within 18 months and will consist of creating lakes where the depth is appropriate. The southern portion of the site will be created into a wetland mitigation bank and potentially donated to the Department of Conservation and Recreation, as stated in their narrative. A portion of the property to the north is proposed, I'm sorry. At this time, city staff has not received, reviewed or accepted park proposals as part of this request and has not taken the proposal into consideration when reviewing the applicant's request in this case. There is one ingress and egress to the site from Wyandotte Trail, and it will be gated at all times. The haul route, which has been reviewed and approved by Public Works Traffic Engineering, is proposed along Wyandotte Trail to South Key Road to US 58 and from Wyandotte Trail to South Key Road westbound to Southampton County. As stated in the operations plan, the public right-of-way will be kept free and clear of Here you have an excerpt of that map within the Comprehensive Plan as it relates to the natural heritage conservation site in South Key Sand Hills as it relates to this site. So the southern portion is located with a natural heritage site as defined by DCR. Just wanted to take a minute and describe what that means, but conservation sites such as this are given a biodiversity rank or a B rank based upon the rarity, quality and number of element occurrences they contain, on a scale from one to five, one being the most significant. The South Key Conservation Site has been assigned a B rank of B1, which represents site of outstanding significance. Additional information related to the significance of the site and its designation as a natural heritage resource are outlined in a letter provided in staff's report provided by DCR on March 1st, 2024. So some of the key considerations, as we noted, a significant portion of the site is identified as a natural heritage site by the Department of Conservation and Recreation. It is that because the site is representative of rare habitats for threatened endangered plants and animal species and offers habitat or site for them to thrive. The conservation sites themselves do not necessarily represent protected lands. It's important to note that, but they are recommended for protection and stewardship because of the natural heritage resources and habitat they support. So a little bit about the South Key Sand Hills, this is the Natural Area Preserve just to the south. It consists of over 3,700 acres. It consists of over 3,700 acres of bottomland forests and sandy uplands along the Blackwater River. Most significant is that it is the last remaining natural stand of longleaf pine trees in, in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So seeds collected from this remnant forest at the northern range limit of longleaf pine present a unique opportunity for it to be restored north and throughout the Commonwealth. Specifically, DCR notes that restoring the longleaf pine to over 1,500 acres of sandy uplands at the preserve is a primary management focus of DCR as it relates to the site. Specifically, the sandy uplands of the site offer the key opportunities for reestablishment. As it relates specifically to the comprehensive plan, protection of natural, cultural, and historical assets of the city is a key principle and value contained within the 2035 comprehensive plan. Extracting of the sandy uplands on the site would inhibit the ability to provide areas suitable for reestablishment of that longleaf pine, and that conflicts with DCR's goals for this natural area preserve. While the plans for the site do envision the conversion of the mines into a recreational space at some point in the future, it would be at the expense of its most valuable resource, the sandy uplands, which would be suitable for this restoration of the, the longleaf pine tree. So with that being said, staff is recommending denial of this application as outlined in, in staff's report. It is important to note, however, in the event that council does determine approval would be warranted, staff has provided seven conditions, and, and those are outlined in staff's report that would be appropriate to include as a part of any ordinance associated with approval. The Planning Commission at their meeting of April 16th, 2024, by a vote of seven to one, have brought forward a recommendation of approval of this application. With that being said, that concludes my report on this item. I'll be happy to stand by for any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address, and let us speak in favor of this ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, my name is Jesse Johnson. I practice law here in Suffolk. My office address is 3508 Suffolk, Virginia. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Paxton Corporation, for this project. Just a word with regard to where we begin with this project, and I'm not, try not to talk a whole lot, because we have our, our scientists here who can explain a lot of the technical things to you with regard to this application. This piece of property came to the Paxton Group as a little bit of a mess. I don't know how else to characterize it. The property had been logged for years. Some people made attempts at some point in time in the past to excavate sand and other materials from the property, and I don't know how many of you visited this site, but if you did, I think you saw a circumstance and a situation that this was not pristine land. And basically, what our plan does, it allows us to excavate the sand, and it is specialty material. It's not common old build-a-road sand. Some of the, some of the sand here has great value. It could be used in golf courses, other cosmetic-type circumstances, so it's valuable. So what we, what we believe we're doing here is actually taking this piece of property, and after we extract the sand, and, and what you'll hear is that the extraction is not going to dig 50, 75-foot-deep holes. It's very shallow, and once that material is, is, is extracted, the property will become basically a wetlands bank and a recreational area if possible, and I think Kevin has already commented on the 50 acres that some of you have heard about. But that's the basic plan. The, the proposal in our application would indicate that there's going to be no external drainage, that is, no water from this site is going to be running into the Blackwater River, that the sand itself is going to be screened and not washed. You know the hours of operation as, as Kevin had indicated to you. So we believe that this is a rehabilitation project. We think that basically with our restoration, after we extract the sand, we'll give the, the, the pines, and there are none on this property now, by the way, a, a chance perhaps to be reseeded. I don't know how that's done, and maybe our scientists can tell us a little bit more about this, but we've, we've made every effort we can to be environmentally sensitive with regard to this piece of property. I don't think that we have any objections from planning staff regarding the, the mechanics of things, hours of operation, the type of equipment used, the road, traffic, et cetera. Don't believe there are concerns with any of planning staff, and we didn't hear any of those concerns voiced at Planning Commission. And I would remind you that Planning Commission voted to approve this seven to one. I think they saw the positives in what we're trying to do here and not the negatives. We don't want to destroy anything, but we feel like the property was in such bad shape, the best thing we could do to it, extract the sand and turn it into something that can be environmentally viable. We reached out to the neighborhood. I think there are two neighbors that we have agreed that if our activities in any way, shape, or form impact their wells, we will bond those wells. So we don't want to do any harm here. We want to do what's right. We think that this mining operation, this bid operation, is consistent with, with the plan, because your, your 2035 plan indicates, don't do any harm. We're not going to do any harm. We think we're going to make it better. And I'm going to yield the rest of my time to Molly Birch, who is our scientist, who can explain a lot of the technical data to you that I wouldn't even begin to try to tell you about. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Molly Birch. I'm a senior environmental scientist for MAP Environmental, Inc. in Virginia Beach, and my office address is 116 Landmark Square, Suite 101 in Virginia Beach. I think when trying to come up with one word that really summarizes what we're trying to do, that one word would be opportunity. I've been doing this a long time, and I've worked with Paxton Corporation for many years. And if there's any entity that can take a damaged site such as this, use it in an economically feasible way while also getting the maximum environmental benefit that they can, it is the Paxton Group. Partially, it's because they're very good at what they do, but more importantly, it's because they care. They care about their community, and I've seen it. And they also care about the environment. If they didn't, they wouldn't have hired me to traipse around for 100 hours and record all the various species and the soils and the subsurface hydrology. This is a very unique site. It offers a vast amount of material that we use in our everyday lives, whether we want to admit it or not. Anyone who drives on a road, anyone who lives in a house, anyone who goes to a hospital, anyone who goes to a school. It's also a site that has been timbered, mined, driven over, compacted, timbered again. It is not a hotbed of biodiversity. The forests are so tight, you can't walk through them. The interior wetlands are overrun with invasive species. Not all forests and wetlands are created equal, and in this case, these are areas that are not valuable. But if we try to get past that to the future picture, that is something that is valuable. This isn't going to be a typical borrow pit operation. It's not going to be extracting everything that can be extracted, dumping construction material in it, and going away. It's going to take longer than that. It's going to be carefully done in phases, and we've put together a very detailed reclamation plan that shows how we're going to do this. You finish one small phase, and immediately you restore it back to a wetland, if it was a wetland previously, or you create a wetland. And not wetlands that are overrun with invasive species, but forested wetlands that have a high level of biodiversity that will help both wildlife, water quality, and flooding. We've worked with our community. We have worked with our stakeholders, and we've worked very closely with DCR. We were on-site with DCR and professionals from the University of Florida today to identify species within the upland areas that are not avoidable for purposes of this project, to try to find them if they're there, collect them, and relocate them. That's not always an easy thing to do. It's not always easy to take the environmental component of a project where people have, people have strong feelings and strong values in what they want to see, and then the economic part of a project where you're trying to, you know, you're running a business, you're trying to make money, you're doing what you can. But when you marry the two, and it can be done, because we, we, we're doing it, we did it today, it can be done, and you can create a project that multiple stakeholders are involved in, that's mutually beneficial to all parties, that helps the environment, that helps our community, that helps our economy, and you can come up with something that's really exciting. And my hope is that 10 years from now, anyone who's gone to the site before will go back to the site, and we can show you what we've done, because it's going to be really great. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next speakers. Please to speak in favor. We've got about a minute and a half for proponents. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak in favor? Hearing none, we have 10 minutes for opposition. Do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. My name is Jason Bullock. I'm the Director of the DCR Natural Heritage Program. I'm not speaking in opposition, first of all. As a state agency and a non-regulatory one, it's not our role or my role on our behalf to speak in opposition, but in hearing some of the remarks here, I just wanted to provide some clarification on some things, some of which is in the DCR letter, the environmental review letter that was referenced by the planning staff. Indeed, this site is significant for the longleaf pine ecosystem restoration work that has happened south of it on South Key Natural Area Preserve, but that is, that system is one of 44 rare, threatened, and endangered species in significant natural communities that are found within that conservation site, four of which have been documented from the project site. As far as this property not being pristine land, having been historically driven over, timbered and retimbered, that is absolutely true, and that's also true for the 3,700 acres south of it, which have been restored to longleaf pine ecosystem. And I also want to point out that while an ultimate goal of a created wetland for wetland mitigation is definitely a better option than some permanent options, that would not be mitigation for the loss of the upland sands. That's all the comments I have. Thank you. And I did not say my address. My business address is 600 East Main Street, Richmond, Virginia, 23219.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have our next speaker to speak in opposition.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager. My name is Tom Ryan, 119 Suffolk Meadows Boulevard, Suffolk. I have a lot of questions about this, more than just saying I oppose this. I've talked to a lot of citizens. I'm representing Citizens Voice, a nonprofit organization in Suffolk. We have spoken to a lot of residents in Suffolk regarding the other borrow pits that are here and the impact it's had on them, the dump trucks, the impact on the environment, the noise, and I'm not sure, I know they said that trucks were going to go in and out, I think off 58, and then to Southampton, if I'm not mistaken, but I do have some questions regarding that and some real concern, because I think the same type of statements were made with our, other borrow pits, and the truck drivers are just not following that. And I know we have a lot of issues regarding the traffic in Suffolk with tractor trailers and dump trucks. We have to solve this problem before we go and unleash another one of these things. I mean, each one of them by themselves may not be an issue, but taken together, this is a major issue in Suffolk, is the traffic and the impact it has on its citizens all over the city. Even though this is as far out as you can go, where they're going to take that sand really concerns me, how they're going to get it from one place to the other. And finally, I'd like to say that if this, if the comprehensive plan that is in place today, and the one we're looking at, if we're not following the comprehensive plan, then why do we have it? Why do we spend two years, you know, designing a comprehensive plan that's supposed to tell the citizens of Suffolk what we want the city to look like in 20 years, and then just go ahead and approve something that goes totally against it? Thank you very much.
We have our next speaker, please.
Good evening, Council. I'll just go right into that. My name's Kelly Hengler, and Mr. Paxton has indeed put a lot of forethought into the work that he does, so I want to recognize that. I'm, I'm speaking to you on terms of not necessarily opposition, like DCR approached you. This is, this adjoining property, and when it was presented to the Planning Commission, okay? It was not made clear, even though staff, I want to give you high accolades, where are you, staff? Because they very much outlined that the adjoining property is DCR, the Department of Conservation and Recreation. The waterway is the Blackwater Scenic Heritage River. This is a co-project between the National Conservancy, the other side in Franklin, I mean, there's a litany down the line of governors who have showed up and general assemblies. It's a bipartisan product. To that point, I would, you know, Mr. Paxton has a, a property here, you know? Do we need sand? Yes. Do I feel like DCR, our partner, you know, our good partner, our state, this property, and even Mr. Paxton, has had an opportunity to fully investigate? I don't see the plan they said they walked today, okay? 30 days since the Planning Commission, right? I don't see that information provided for your consideration as our legislators, right? To look at the statutes, to see what is available. Now is the time for everything that we do to be a collaboration, not a delay, 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 okay? But an actual thought-provoking collaboration, that we're all at the dinner table, everybody, please pass the sides. We really just have to do that, and I mean that in reflection for Mr. Paxton, I mean it in reflection for DCR. They are literally the adjoining property owner, and that was not portrayed before the Planning Commission. I don't think that was a service to Mr. Paxton. I don't think that was a service to the people. I don't think that that spoke of the collaboration of the City of Suffolk, and I frankly, I mean no attack on the scientist, but she's not a publicist. I'd like to actually hear science presented to my council, okay? My esteemed council members, who know our codes, who know dealings with the state, and who have good dealings with the state. This is what I implore you for your consideration, either whatever choice we have in the least manner to delay decision-making, but to support decision-making. This might need to procedurally go back to planning, go back to the Planning Commission, only for the purpose of there being a real collaboration. Sit down with all the science and all the data, and let's get to it, and let's see what we can do. Period. And that's my comment, and I thank you for allowing it. I am Kelly Hengler.
Address.
Oh, you want my address? Okay, well, there's P.O. Box 6032 in Suffolk, Virginia, which is the CE&amp;H Heritage Civic League address, and I live at 9345 Eclipse Drive in Suffolk, Virginia, proud to serve. Thank you very much.
We have our next speaker, please, to speak in opposition.
Good evening, Councilmen, and thank you for hearing our voice tonight. My name is Beth Cross. I am part of the Nanceman River Preservation Alliance. Our address is 88- Our address is 8881 Eclipse Drive, and we are speaking not so much in opposition as concern as to the plans that are obviously close to the Blackwater River. We don't think old wetlands should be ripped up for new wetlands, and we think this is an important environmental and water quality issue to look at. So either provide environmental impact plans that we can see and approve, or do not impact the land close to the water. Thank you.
Thank you. Have our next speaker to speak in opposition.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Andy Perotti. I live at 2655 Riverwatch Drive, that's in the Hillpoint area of Suffolk. I am speaking here in opposition, not so much for the concept of having this kind of a development, but we've had a burrow pit in Suffolk, and we have seen how it looked when it was no longer functional, as well as its functionality and what it would take to really reestablish its viability. The other area that I'm very concerned with is the impact on the surrounding conserved woods and forest land in terms of what will happen to that. I mean, you know, when you see trees on the side of a highway that are exposed to heavy traffic, there are effects on those areas of the wooded land. So that's a consideration. But the last consideration that we really, it's kind of been alluded to by some other previous speakers, is that if one of the major goals is not only to reap the benefits of this property on the business side upfront, and then secondarily to turn it over to be something of value to the City of Suffolk as well as, you know, as a recreational environment, I think some effort should have been put into what that plan is, what it will look like, to show that there is true investment in what they're going to do and how they're going to do it. They've mentioned about a more shallow approach to their dredging. What are those impacts, and how will that be of benefit to either turning over what they need on the business side, but also protecting what we want on the side of Conservancy, and then later on as an asset for this city? And I think we have not seen, considering we have some issues of confidence because of what we've seen with an existing pit, that it is in their best interest to make sure it is very clear what they are committing to and for how long, and what they're going to design that will meet the needs and the desires of the people of the city and not necessarily their designers. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have our next speaker to speak in opposition.
Good evening. My name is Lorna Taylor. I reside at 5577 Gottwin Boulevard in Suffolk, Virginia, and I live in between Everett's Road and Gottwin Boulevard. I'm speaking in opposition because I feel the effects of these dump trucks and the sand pits every single day. When these trucks are going up the street, I'm feeling my windows and my house shaking. I stood outside my house one morning from 7:00 to 1:00. I counted 130 trucks going up Everett's Road to the three burrow pits. I don't know which ones they were going to, but it was three. The most important thing that we have in this city is the citizens. I don't want to see anyone else have to deal with what we have to deal with in Oakland. Our school, Oakdale Elementary School, is not even a mile away from these burrow pits. We don't know what they're bringing in, we don't know what they're taking out, but they're leaving sand all up and down Everett's Road and Gottwin Boulevard. So I hope, I don't live where this is, but I would just hope that you all will consider the citizens, and we would love to have some air quality monitors for the citizens of Oakland. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker to speak in opposition. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak in opposition? We still got about three minutes. Hearing none, we will move to our five-minute rebuttal period. If there's anyone who would like to speak during rebuttal.
Just a few comments. The gentleman that indicated that we weren't following the comp plan, we believe that we are, certainly in spirit. We're not doing anything to this piece of property by returning it to the best it can be. That doesn't violate this comp plan at all, so I don't believe that's a great argument. Next, the property is located where you have very few homes. None of the people who came up here live anywhere near this burrow pit. Staff had no problem with the traffic situation. Now, and I think those are points that you have to take into account. Take a look at your proposed ordinance that's in your packet. This is a use permit. It's not a rezoning. You're not married to this if the operator, if the owner, doesn't comply with your ordinance. The company has to adhere to all local, state, and federal laws governing the operation of this pit. So gentlemen and ladies, you have control over this particular circumstance if it doesn't comply with your use permit order, okay? That's an important point. So you haven't relinquished control. We don't intend to be in a situation where you're going to have to do that. We're going to leave it better than it was found, and I'll yield the rest of my time
Hello. First of all, I would like to clarify that I'm not a publicist. I'm a professional wetland scientist with the Society of Wetland Scientists. I'm a Virginia-certified professional wetland delineator, and I am a Virginia surface water delineator as well. I've been doing this for many, many years, and when I first started doing this, I wanted to save the Chesapeake Bay by myself, apparently, and I didn't want to see any development. I didn't want to see any tree cut down, I wanted to see nothing. But then over time, you realize that that's not reality, that's not the way life works, and we have to take into consideration the needs of multiple stakeholders. Sometimes it's five, sometimes it's 105, but we listen and we talk, and we didn't make it abundantly clear that this property is directly north of DCR. That was in our application, and it was stated during the Planning Commission hearing. But this property is not owned by DCR. Even though it's not owned by DCR, we've been working with them. Again, we met with them on-site again today with some folks from the University of Florida to look for a certain type of caterpillar that they could take back as part of a rehabilitation process for the species. It is true that if the sand is removed from certain portions of the site, then no longleaf pine will flourish, but it's also true that no longleaf pine will flourish without controlled burning. That's not something that private citizens do. It's not, it's a species that is easily overtaken by others. It grows slowly, and it can only reproduce, it only releases its seed pod through controlled burning, and that's not happening at this site. It hasn't, at least in the research I've done, and there's no longleaf pine on-site. Additionally, most of the site isn't sandy uplands. It drops off fairly quickly, and that's when you get these low-lying wetlands that are just filled with fragmities australis, which have choked out everything else, and are nuisance species, and which are handled by poisoning them and lighting them on fire. It's the only way to get rid of them. So most of the site doesn't consist of sandy uplands. In terms of the Blackwater River, no mining activity will occur within 100 feet from the river. In most areas, that's farther, because there's some low-lying wetlands that are pristine and that should be protected, and those are being protected as a part of this. It won't impact the view shed from the Blackwater River. No water will run into the Blackwater River from this project. It will have an erosion and sediment control plan. So all practicable decisions have been made, options have been taken to make this project one that's beneficial to as many people as possible, and it's not, it's not the most capitalistic, because it doesn't just dig out the sand, fill it with construction material, and leave. It's not the most conservationist, because it's not a property that's being handed over to the state for creation of a longleaf pine stand. But it's something in the middle. It's something that will benefit the city in many, many ways, and it's something that, again, we're working together to make a project that everyone feels like they have a stake in, and that we can all appreciate, and we can all recognize that we've all worked really hard together to make something really magnificent. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, that concludes our time. This public hearing is now closed. Counsel, questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Johnson?
All right, I'm going to get out of the way here, get mine out of the way, and I'm going to be a little while, Roger. That's what we say sometimes, and we're going to be a little while, right? I hope everyone on counsel went out to the site and visited. I went, I visited. Mr. Paxton is a very, very, very competent man and very, very reassuring of what can happen, and I like him, he's a good fellow. But that doesn't help me with what the problem is here. The problem is, number one, how many natural heritage sites are there in Suffolk? Can you answer that for me, Kevin? One, one. And it's this site. It's not this particular site, but it touches this site, and the same plant materials and things are there that is on the other site. I was impressed with the whole facility, the whole site. Now, has it been torn apart? Oh, my gosh, it's been torn apart. Union Camp logged it and logged it, they dug sand out of it, and part of it just really destroyed it, but there's plants growing there that I'd never seen growing anywhere else in this area. And then I saw the river, and I thought, holy crap, no wonder the city wanted to buy this site three years ago. We were going to buy this site three years ago to have access to the river and to create a city park. As a matter of fact, I was very, very excited, and then the money went away, or something fell apart. So we didn't, we didn't get the site, and the property owner decided he needed to sell the site, and Mr. Paxton was wise enough to buy it, because it is a very unique site. It's better than 300 acres. My problem with the whole thing, though, is I want, I want him to be successful, and I don't want him to lose his money. But on the other side of the coin, the one thing that was said today that I go, yeah, why haven't we said that before? Collaboration, we need to work together. No city should have a site like this and not be working toward its successful future. This is like a little Yellowstone. I'm sorry. It doesn't have everything Yellowstone has, but this has unique features that are nowhere else in this state. So how can we allow this to happen? I have a real problem with that, particularly in the 2035 Plan, it directly says, this is to be saved. This is part of your uniqueness as a city, and we don't have to develop everything and take it away. And, you know, he's just digging sand, but guess what? That's what the site's about. The sand is what makes it so unique. And I'm saying this like I'm against it. I'm not yet, I'm not there yet. I just want to create a vision for you guys of what we're doing here. I'm not sure this should have ever even come before us, because when you have a site of this uniqueness, it should never, how can we consider a sand pit on it? That's my problem, number one. Number two, 100 foot from the river, really? Ma'am, really? 100 foot is going to be okay off the river? I don't think so. I'm sorry. I can't believe that that's okay. The city's plan originally was to buy this site, I'm making this up, but I'm just assuming Mr. Furlough, Mr. Furlough was in Barks and Wrexham when we talked about it, and create a path to the river, give people access, create an area that people could go and hike, and hopefully open the river up so we could walk on down the river, because we'd own the whole site. There's no reason in my mind that the same thing still couldn't be done. Mr. Paxton has assured me that once they've finished, he wants to give the site back to the state and to the city, but there's no guarantees there, because we haven't worked out a plan that will work. And I told Jeff I couldn't, he knows I can't vote in favor of it, I can't approve it. I don't, I just don't understand what we're thinking as a people, that we can't do a better job with things like this. This happens to be in my borough, it's on the very southern end of our borough, and he's right, there are no homeowners that would be bothered. I mean, it's wide open down there, and if there was going to be a sand pit somewhere, it's probably not a bad location, but I do take, I take a little problem with the trucks coming on the roads. You say what you want to, but put another 100 to 200 trucks on Route 58, South Key Road, Route 58? Come on, guys, we're not ready yet. We've got to get a road plan in place for our whole area, from my perspective, before we can allow that kind of thing to go forward. So I said I was going to be a minute, but, and the other thing with the longleaf pines, you bothered me when you talked about burning longleaf pines. Anybody, I'm a horticulturist, I know that, but this site is an ideal site to go in and burn, because you've got water on all sides, and it could happen, and it could work. So don't, you know, we can still make things work if we want to put longleaf pines on the, they've got to be in an area where you can burn them off and send them, make them go to seed. I don't know, anyway, that, I just have a whole lot of problems. To have a site this unique in our city and not abide by the 2035 Plan, or not try to make a plan with the property owner to develop this site so that we all come out on the right end of it, I'm not saying we couldn't dig a little bit of sand there, I'm just saying this is not the right plan, from my perspective. One more minute, and I'm going to leave it alone. We need access to the Blackwater in this city, we know that, and it could be, the people of this city don't even know it's there a lot of the time, because it's so far away from us, but that's not, that's not Mr. Paxton's problem. All right, I'll leave it alone for now. In other words, I can't vote in favor of this. I don't think it's in the best interest of the city at this time to vote in favor of it. Now, do I want to, I don't want to, I want to work with Mr. Paxton and try to figure out what can happen with that site so that it's successful, because it is way out there, and it's in a location that I'm not sure you can do but so much on, but I don't think this is the right way. The city called it right. You can't, I don't know how we can approve this as a counsel, or for the people of the city. All right, I'll stop. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Councilman Rector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to go back to one of the slides that Kevin presented up there and pull a word out of it that I think sums up a whole lot of what we have going on here, and that word is stewardship. Anybody that goes to church is very familiar with the word stewardship, because you're given a card every fall that says, please pledge so that we can be good stewards of God's property. And what stewardship means to me is you take what you have and you do the best that you can to preserve it and enhance it and keep it going, but at the same time, recognizing that you are going to be using that resource either to hold church services or do whatever. So I think that this plan that has been brought forward by Paxton, I think, does represent a reasonably good stewardship of the property. I have been out there, I have tried to walk through the woods that are out there. You cannot get through them. There are places out there that you can barely put your fist between two of the trees that are going up. And Molly, do you mind coming back up to that? I just, I want to talk a little bit about the longleaf pine. The longleaf pine, from what I've been reading about it, is essentially a species of pine that is a little bit of a victim of its own success, if you will. It is a big pine, it's a hard pine, and it was logged extensively, and people just assumed that it was an abundant resource that was never going to run out. And from what I've read, there used to be close to 90 million acres of pine, and it stretches in a band from this part of Virginia down through the southeast and across over to Texas. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that now we're left with, what, about maybe 3 million acres of longleaf pine?
It's very sparse and fragmented, yes. It's not a continuous system anymore, and you are correct in stating it's a victim of its own, of its own self.
And you are correct in stating it's a victim of its own, of its own self. It was harvested for its hardwood, and the way you get that is by growing slowly. But there's other trees that grow way faster, and so they, they grow above them and they block out the light, and that's why you need the controlled burning. And, and it can be done on this site, but it's something that, the expectation that a private property owner do that, it, it seems to be, it seems to be something that, that, again, it's the, the state, the state does that, the state does that on their own property, and for a private property owner to do that, I don't know of any, of any who do. There are no long-leaf pine there now because they've been choked out by other trees that have been allowed to grow, particularly lobolli pine, which grow very quickly.
And the controlled burning is also necessary to clear out the underbrush?
Yes, so that is.
So that when the seedlings do fall, they will go into the earth and not on top of something else where they're not gonna germinate?
That is correct, yes.
Is that correct? Okay. All right, thank you very much. And you're walking, you say you've been on, walking on this property for hundreds of hours.
I've been trying to. There are areas you can walk on, and there, there's areas that you're, it's more of a crawling, trying to get through these areas. And I'm, I'm very familiar with it, and there are a few natural heritage species that I have seen in a select area, particularly right around one of the old, one of the old rows that, roads that go south to the DCR property. And that's why we were meeting with them today in that area to look for certain species, to send them down to Florida as part of a larger rehabilitation project.
In, in your professional opinion, when this project is over and done with and the land has been restored as best as it can be, would there, is there still, you know, any potential hope for any long-leaf pine to exist on this property?
Yes, there are, and particularly, when I spoke and I said 100 feet, it's actually 150. And if you see the map up there, the 150-foot is just toward the interior, the middle on the western side. It extends much farther in those other areas, and there's, there's some uplands right around that road that would, are still high enough that the long-leaf pine could, could be planted and maintained there. And then there's some pieces along the south by DCR's property as well.
All right. Thank you very much for that.
Councilman Fawcett?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. And I appreciate with my colleague, Mr. Rector, just went over with Molly. Molly, thank you for coming up here tonight because you, you have presented a comprehensive review of this.
Do you want me to just walk back up?
You're fine, you can sit there if you'd like. But what I'm getting to is, you're very knowledgeable of this piece of property, there's no question. You've been out there a lot from just your knowledge of what you've seen, and I can tell you, I have gone out there and rode every inch of that property that's capable of being put on, ridden on, or walked on, or whatever kind of way you wanna call it. And it's, it's tore up. It's, it's tore up. You, I, I'm quite, I'm quite complex how any even animal could get through the forest land there because it's so packed and so tight. It, it's something you have to go out there and you have to go through it to see it. Now, when it comes to the Blackwater River, and there's been potentially talk about one day having some kind of a recreational park out that way, and this could come to that at a later time. City couldn't reach it when they tried to do it. So, this is an opportunity to partner with the Paxton group that this could potentially happen, that this could one day be that park that everybody's looking for. You know, I, hey, I've driven up there, and the roadway is just, I mean, the roadway going in there, he's done a remarkable job just correcting the roadway going into that property. You got the hunting club up there that virtually hunts that property on one end of it that doesn't seem to have any issues with the project. I really haven't really seen anybody that's had a real impact with the project. I think it's a comprehensive report here, and just taking into consideration that the planning commission sent it over with a 7-1 vote. There's been a lot of questions and, and answers to the questions between when this project has started to the time it's got to this council. And I, I'm, I'm kind of, you know, I love land, and I love to see things grow, and I love wildlife and all the things that come with it and the natural resources and all, but I don't think what he's gonna do there is going to create a big, you know, we're not gonna fall off the cliff here. We're going to mine this thing. It's gonna be a shallow mining operation, not deep. If you go out and look at some of the other pits, they're real deep. This one's not considered to be that. He's gonna restore the property back to a good wetlands bank that could be futuristic, that could revitalize that area out there to allow plants and things to grow and maybe other wildlife to flourish from it. So, you know, with that being said, you know, I am gonna make a motion, Mayor, that we go ahead and pass this request tonight. So, I'd like to make the motion to pass that CUP 2023-025.
Okay, we've got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
I just have a comment at this point. I appreciate the Paxtons' presence in our community, and they do, they do good work. And I appreciate the, the volume of information that we got tonight, and I'm gonna probably oversimplify this, but that's kinda what I do with things. But it seems to me this is a very unique environmental area. It's a heritage, a heritage site as far as the environment goes. We've got DCR to the south of it, and we're talking about the quality of the sand and the value of the sand, but I also think that the sand is what makes it a unique area and makes it environmentally special. So, if we, if we, and I, I don't think I can ask the DCR guy to come back up, but it seems to me if the, if the sand is the key part that makes this such a unique area, and we take the sand away, that we don't have the unique environment that we, that we have now. So, and I, I hear the comments about that it's been torn up, it's not been well-maintained, and so on and so forth, but I think, I just, I, I, you know, it bothers me that, that we're, we're suggesting that we take the sand out, and the sand is what makes this a unique area. So, that's just my comment.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Got a motion on the floor for approval. I haven't heard a second. Councilman Rector?
I'll go ahead and second the motion.
Okay, I got a second from Councilman Rector. Councilmember Butler Barlow, did you wanna speak again?
Sorry, I just had a, a second.
Yes, ma'am.
Thought that I, that I didn't include. I know that we got an approval from the planning commission that voted in favor of this, but we also got a recommendation from our staff that reviewed it to deny, so we're conflicted there.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor for approval and a second. Is there any other discussion? I'm hearing none. I'd like to offer a few comments. I've been taking notes. I too went out to the property Monday, spent about an hour and 15 minutes trudging around out there. And there's a lot of, in my opinion, there seems to be a lot of, some unanswered questions, but just important, just importantly, somebody said this was a unique piece of property, and it absolutely is a unique piece of property when you look at where it is and what condition it's in right now, and what the pros and cons could be to Mr. Paxton's project. Now, I'm not saying it could be open for more discussion. I don't know what could be done. I'm not even sure about this water access, 'cause it, and I may be totally confused, Kevin, you can help me if I get off track here. But I think the property that's, that is on the water belongs to DCR. No? I'll get a head shake. Okay, so there, this does go to the water also. Okay. But DCR runs mostly on side, okay. Down the other way. One thing I did notice is that really the property has been logged, and the only thing that has sprung up since the property was logged is just whatever seedlings and everything else was there, which is why it's so tight. There really aren't any large trees. There's not anything to be logged. I think all you can do now is clear it and, and chip it. So, and I'm gonna be all over the place here. Also went out there with a member of the Hunt Club. They own two acres pretty much in the middle of this property, and they had a couple of these long-leaf pines on their property. And to be honest with you, I didn't see them anywhere. I mean, there was just a few of them. I mean, great big pine cones, and I don't think there's a lot of those on the particular property that we're talking about. So, nobody is taking any of these things down. They're not logging it. They are taking an area that's already been logged, and it's hard to envision unless you've seen it. It's already been logged. There's nothing there but, for the most part, 10, 12, 14 feet worth of, some type of vegetation and, and small saplings of some type that are rather compact in, in the rest of the area. So, to the extent that this may, or I think it will, provide an opportunity for restoration of that area versus like it is, I think if it stays like it is, it wouldn't preclude anybody just from taking down whatever you wanna take down. And, and I might be wrong. Would that be, you know, I think if Mr. Paxton wanted to, and he wanted to just clear it all and chip it for whatever it's worth, then that's what you got, which is pretty much zero. As far as traffic is concerned, as far as housing is concerned, this is one case, and we've looked at some other ones with burrow pits, and it didn't take us long to turn them down because the traffic is going by a lot of houses, and there is an issue with traffic getting in and out. But this is a straight shot to 58, it's maybe two miles, or I'll say two to three miles maxed out. There's maybe six houses on the road. Most of them, it's farmland, and most of the houses are, are set way off the road. There may be one that's a couple hundred yards off the road. So, I don't think that's a factor at, at all. So, you kinda eliminate that. The Hunt Club is in, well, they don't have any issue with it. They're in favor of it. There were not any local residents that came out and, and spoke against it, none, which is kind of unusual. You'd think somebody in proximity to the site would come and speak in opposition, even if it was around the corner and someplace else, but that was not the case. If the whole site, and this might be wrong too, but this whole area is 3,753 acres, I think was the number, of that conservation area? Is that the conservation area itself?
That's the South Key Sand Hills.
Come on, you might as well stay up there, I'm gonna ask you some more stuff, 'cause I hate it when I get confused, but...
That is the natural area preserve known as the South Key Sand Hills to the south.
So, I mean, it's not part of this property.
It's not part of that property. This property's 338 acres.
There's 3,753 acres adjacent to it.
Yes, immediately south.
Correct. This is 338, so that's less than 10% of what's on the other side of it. I'm not sure we talked about some kinda rare animals and plants and geographical formations, but I don't think I've heard anybody say what those are. Does anybody know what they are?
DCR outlined those line by line in the letter that they provided to the city on March 1st.
But they can live in the other 3,753 acres? Probably. I didn't mean to ask you that. I'm just, if it's adjacent to 3,753 acres. And I probably should've done my homework a little better. If these, these three pits, from what I understand, are gonna be staged, not only be done at one time, pit one, then pit two, then pit three, and if I need to get Mr. Paxton or representative up here to clarify that, is that correct?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Yes, they're, they're gonna be staged and dug individually, one, two, and three. And I'd also like to note that the wetlands that are existing have protected buffers, so we are not going into any existing wetlands. We've done our environmental research, and my name's Jeffrey Paxton, Jr., with Paxton Contractors, by the way, I apologize. Everything you see in green that's in burrow one, two, and three is protected with a buffer, as well as the Blackwater River, which is actually protected by a wetland buffer, which gives you that additional 50 feet, which we can adjust to get more footage if necessary. But we've taken all the proper environmental measures that we possibly can. And one thing I would like to touch on is stewardship. We went into this project knowing there were challenges, but we knew we had to do it properly, and we had to follow all environmental concerns, state regulations for mining, and we wouldn't have invested this amount of time and energy and asked for each and individual, you know, your individual time on this project to review it. So, I really just wanna assure everyone here tonight that we've taken the proper measures, and without a public-private partnership, this sand is not valuable to anybody. It's not valuable to DCR. It's not valuable to the Paxton Holdings Group. It's gonna take a collaborative effort, as Molly Birch spoke about, to basically restore what's here after we mine the 10 to 12 feet and create a mitigation bank and allow the long-leaf pine to potentially come back, because in all these green areas, there's gonna be no excavation. So, these are all potential areas that could be modified and beneficial to DCR and to the Paxton Holdings Group. So, I wanna make that abundantly clear, that that is an option.
My point to this, to the staging is you're not gonna go in there and just start leveling everything. We're gonna do one, one pit and then restore that pit.
That's correct.
So, all the remediation, the one pit would be done, it'd be watered, and then you could, and, like I said, I guess that's part of the plan, that when you finish the first one, then you go to the second one, then you go to the third one.
Yes, sir.
So, and they will be restored as we go, unlike some other projects that you just have to wait for its useful life to disappear, and then you have to restore the whole thing.
Correct.
So, this will be done in stages. Now, do we have anything that's gonna ensure that that's the way it's going to happen? And I'm gonna ask, I can ask you, I can ask Kevin.
There's nothing that...
Is that part of the...
That's outlined that way. We could put that in if, if necessary. And the goal with reclamation each burrow pit as we go is also to get MAP Environmental involved to do a wetland mitigation bank as we're closing out each burrow pit. So, as we're sloping and doing the, the state-regulated measures, we're also gonna try to create mitigation banks, and we'll have the help of Molly Birch and her team to follow those measures and guidelines, which will actually restore the property to what we deem greater value.
But, but that's currently not in the plan that you've submitted?
Correct. Right now, it's just a burrow pit operation.
But that, in essence, if that happened, then that would address the environmental concerns, if it's one pit, one, one pit done, restored, environmental work done before you move to the next pit?
I feel that it would. And I also feel that without, again, a public-private partnership, none of this would get done. DCR would never, you know, get what they want. We wouldn't get a mitigation bank. The, the property would be in the sense that it is in today, where you, you can't walk through. You can just chip it, like you mentioned, but nothing's valuable at this point.
If anything, in my opinion, if everything happens the way it's being described, we'd be in a better position then than we are now.
That's, that's our professional opinion.
Because right now, you've got nothing.
Right now, it's not valuable.
And it, it'll stay as nothing.
Correct. And if we can mine and do burrow pit one, two, and three...
So, would it be prudent, maybe, rather than to vote on it, that we table it for 30 days and let the applicant come back with those suggested changes if that's a... and let the applicant come back with those suggested changes if that's agreeable?
We would have to discuss it internally with our team.
Mr. City Attorney, is that something we can...
You, you can postpone the vote, and you can amend the conditions.
Okay. All right, I'm just, just gonna throw that out there. If not, we'll proceed with the vote like it is. But right now, we have a motion on the floor. Thank you, sir. Thank y'all for your time. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, may I, may I inquire? Is this something that we could proffer right now? Because we're prepared to do that.
I'm sorry, say again.
Is this something that we can proffer right now?
I, I would recommend that we get a detailed, so, part of the Borough Pit, Borough Pit has to have a plan for the operations. I would recommend that that plan be made part of the conditions and whatever staging gets put in there. This sounds kind of complicated to do on the fly right here in the next five minutes.
So, you would recommend, well, we can't do that, but you would recommend...
If you're gonna add additional conditions, I, I would recommend giving some time for staff and the applicant to work through what conditions are feasible and what conditions are not feasible.
Okay, right now, we've got a motion on the floor to approve it with a second. Do we have any further discussion of, of the vote? I'm sorry, Councilman Johnson.
Okay, one more time, Mike. Mr. Mayor, I want you to understand, look at the map up there, and see the Blue River running right along the property line? That is the river. And that river, the whole property has access to that river. When you're asking if we even had access, when we looked at the plan three years ago, four years ago, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, the idea was to put a northern park in, up where the green area is on the top, which is mainly wetlands, but you could park it, and then bring along the purple line access to the river for both people to go in and put boats on the river and take access of the park. That was the city's plan. The rest of the plan was to take the rest of the property probably and have it logged, and have it developed, and then try to plant longleaf on it. All of the brown area, and I'm not saying we shouldn't allow him to mine it yet, I'm just saying, all of the brown area is area that, that would have been, longleaf pine could have gone back on, or we could have reinvented the habitat. It's no question the property's in trouble, as far as the way they've not, the way they've cut the wood on it. But my problem is that, I just want the public to understand exactly what this is about. If we had bought that site as a city, we were gonna give the southern end of it to the DCR and let them try to redevelop it and do whatever. Am I right? I mean, that was the plan at the time. And I don't think that's out there. I just want people to understand, because that's what upset me so much. I was so excited to think we'd have river access on the southern end of the city, which we don't spend enough money on, in my opinion. But anyway, that's all I'm saying. Now, if, if we want to set up a mining plan with these guys, and that's why the lawyer was, said he could probably come up with something, we've, I've talked to him. There's a way we could work it out with him.
But, what you're talking about's old news, though, because we, we don't have access to it anymore. We don't own that piece of property.
That's not my point. My point, my point was in talking to them how we could preserve the land. I have a real problem with the fact that, and if, if the vote's gonna go like it's gonna go, but if this is a natural heritage site, and this is how this council's gonna treat it, it upsets me to no end. I'm sorry. But that's, that's just me. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm done.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Well, I've, I've visited the place too, and I'm very impressed with Mr. Paxton. So, I don't see any problem if we get together and work together. I'd like to make a substitute motion to table it for 60 days.
Okay, we've got a substitute motion to table for 60 days. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
I had another comment, but let me, let me make my comment, and then I'll second that. I'm just looking at the map, so, I just need a, a little bit of clarification. So, everything that is sand-colored on this map is gonna be mined. It's 212 acres of surface mining of the 338 acres. Is that, is that correct? So, everything that's in tan is intended to be mined? So, okay, I just wanted to clarify that. And with that, I'll second the substitute motion.
If we could just clarify the motion, that it's to postpone this until the July 19th meeting.
Okay. It'll be to the July 19th meeting. So, we have a substitute motion on the floor made by Vice Mayor Ward to table to July 19th, which was seconded by Councilmember Butler Barlow. Is there any further discussion of the substitute motion?
I, I think it might be the 17th.
It might be the 17th.
Yes. I'm sorry, I was looking at June, not July.
No worries.
Was it June? What'd you say? We're in May, June, it will be July, won't it?
July 17th.
Yeah, July 17th, okay. We're in the Chinese calendar, July 17th. Okay, to table to July 17th. Councilman Richter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just want to be clear about what we're doing and why we're doing it. I was going through the conditions, and condition number four says that the surface mining operations Borough Pit shall be in conformance with the plans titled Operating Plan 2024. Paxton Holdings VVT with Paxton Contractors is identified in Exhibit D. And then going through Exhibit D, I guess, is, is that where this language would be included? Because there is language in there, paragraph 15, about the reclamation plan. But it does, I, I guess, it, it does not specifically say in there that, that Borough Pit number one will be mined and reclaimed. So, I, I was looking through there just to see whether there was language in there that already intimated that, but I, I'm not sure 100% see it. But I just want to be sure that that's, that's what we're doing.
I would think that the tabling would allow for those amendments to ensure that there would be staging of the pits and restoration after each pit was complete, along with the associated environmental work, and also possibly any discussion that they may want to have with the city as to a use present or in the future. I'm just surmising that that would be what we're talking about. Counsel?
Yeah, and, and then, you know, I just did want to point out, you know, a lot has been said about the, I, I guess, the quality of the people that Paxton are and their commitment to doing things correctly. If you read through the narrative that was provided by Courtney and Associates, who I'm assuming were the surveyors of the property, they, they speak extensively in there about Paxton's reputation for doing right by the land. And, you know, we talked, we talked about the collaboration and, you know, the people have said there's a lack of collaboration here. I, I sort of disagree with that. I, I think bringing somebody in here of Paxton's reputation and caring for the environment to try to restore this piece of property to something close to what it was before Union Camp got a hold of it, you know, I, I, I think they're about the best, best that we could have to go in there and do it. The sand is a natural resource. It's a very valuable resource. And I, I think Ms. Birch kind of summed it up best at the Planning Commission meeting when she said, "We do need to try to reach a balance between the needs of the environment and the needs, needs of man going forward." So, I'll, I'll support the tabling, but I, you know, it, I, I'm not 100% sure it's gonna really necessarily change anything.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to table until July 17th, made by Vice Mayor Ward, and seconded by Councilmember Butler Barlow. Hearing no further discussion, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to one, with Councilmember Fawcett voting in opposition.
Okay, we'll now move to our next public hearing, which is in ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk to change the zoning from B2, General Commercial Zoning, and M2, Heavy Industrial Zoning District, to RU18, Residential Urban, 18, Conditional, zoning district for properties located at 606 Carolina Road, zoning map 34, parcel 83 and 83D, account numbers 100280000 and 104000265. This is RZN 2024-2. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Again, Kevin Wine, Director of Planning and Community Development, will provide the staff report. Kevin?
Thank you again, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I stated this is a request to rezone properties from our B2 General Commercial Zoning District and M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District to RU18. That's our residential urban zoning district with a max density of 18 units per acre, conditional in, to construct a townhome and/or multifamily development on property located on Carolina Road. The property is located in the Core Support Use District, which is located in the central growth area. It's approximately one mile south of the downtown core. Here we have the properties. The subject properties are located at 606 Carolina Road, consist of tax map parcel 34*83 and 83D. 83 is split-zoned, B2 General Commercial and M2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District. They are also located on Carolina Road, and they're subject to our SCOT Special Corridor Overlay District as well. To the north of, of the property is the Northern-Southern Railroad and the Southern Stations Apartments. Those are zoned RU, Residential Urban. To the south, we have the South Side Meadows Subdivision, consisting of single-family detached residential homes, zoned RC, Residential Compact, and commercial businesses, zoned B2. To the east of the property, we have single-family detached residential homes, zoned RM. And to the west, it, care, to the west across Carolina Road, there are a variety of industrial uses and vacant forested land, zoned M2. So, the applicant is requesting to rezone these to RU18 to make way for a townhome multifamily development on the site. The, the main, the parcel up at the front of the site would actually house a BMP store mortar pond that would serve the Paul D. Camp Proposed Trade School to the south. That's currently the Farmer Joe's Retail Store. The applicant, in this case, has voluntarily proffered that the residential development will be limited to no more than 235 townhome and/or multifamily units in total. We have the conceptual layout here. This was provided in support of the application. It's not proffered, so it, it may be subject to change, but we will review it during the site development process, should the rezoning be approved. The conceptual layout depicts 29 buildings ranging from unit totals of five to 10 units for an overall total of 235. The proposed development would take access from a proposed future right-of-way that will come off of Carolina Road through the property and ultimately connect with Woodrow Avenue, Lewis Avenue, and Charlotte Avenue back to Carolina Road. Those are in, in the South Suffolk neighborhood. The applicant will be required to meet all applicable design and layout standards established within the UDO for this type of residential development, and compliance with those standards will be reviewed at the time of development. It's important to note that one of those standards includes vegetated screening against non-compatible uses. In this case, a, a good example is the, the South Side Meadows neighborhood, in which there would be a, a minimum of a 10-foot landscaped buffer. So, we look at every rezoning against our comprehensive plan and Unified Development ordinance. And relevant, relevant to this application, I wanted to touch on a couple key points, but one, keeping development focused in our designated growth areas. This is in the central growth area. Promoting a balance of residential and non-residential uses, the promotion and compatibility in land use patterns. We do have the downtown area less than a mile away, and a variety of multifamily and single-family, both attached and detached in the vicinity. Lastly, encouraging the development of a balanced and diverse housing stock. So, with this being a rezoning request on a property that currently does not have any unit leverage as it relates to a residential zoning on the site currently, we did look to the Unified Development Ordinance as it relates to impacts on public facilities. And in this case, as it relates to schools, this property is currently served by Lakeland High School, Kings Fork Middle School, and Kilby Shores Elementary School. There is currently capacity at Lakeland High School and Kings Fork Middle to serve this, however, there is not at Kilby Shores Elementary School. As such, the 43 elementary school students that would be generated by this proposal per the Unified Development Ordinance, the developer has the option to advance capacity at the Kilby Shores Elementary School replacement project that is contained within the Capital Improvements Plan. In total, the developer is proffering a little north of $1.5 billion towards the advancement of capacity at Kilby Shores Elementary School. So, as it relates to proffers, I noted the advancement of the capacity at the Kilby Shores Elementary School replacement project outlined in the CIP. They are proffering a maximum of 235 dwelling units, consisting of a mix. So, we're gonna have townhomes and multifamilies, as envisioned. They've also proffered architectural and design standards, including roof materials, siding minimum materials, minimum unit square footage, and that all units will have an elevated slab or crawl space. Lastly, they have identified improvements contained within their TIA that has been evaluated by the city, and they will construct those. So, within staff's report and pro, subsequent to the Planning Commission's consideration, we received an updated proffer statement from the developer as it relates to this. Specifically, it was proffer eight that referenced a connection to Valor Court. Valor Court is a cul-de-sac that exists in the South Side Meadows neighborhood, Greenfield off of Greenfield Crescent. It would, this connection would cross two off-site parcels. One is the, call it the Antinucci piece, the other's the Dakota parcel. The developer, in this case, has one of these under contract and has a full title of the Dakota parcel at this point. I'll walk you through what, what those are here in a moment, and what ultimately this proffer would have allowed for. But here we have the, the Parkwood site, that's shaded in red. You have the Dakota parcel, which is under ownership by the developer. And then you have this blue strip that we'll call the Antinucci site in between. And here we have the conceptual overlaid to the Parkwood parcel. This is what it would approximately look like. The developer essentially was proffering a connection point here from Valor Court to There were some sequencing involved in that. Through the Parkwood rezoning, our development process, it would be an emergency ingress egress. Ultimately, through the development of the Dakota parcel, it would become a full-fledged access. So, after review, being an off-site proffer, as outlined in staff's report, does not meet the require, that proffer did not meet the requirements of the Code of Virginia. The rezoning itself did not give rise to the need for it, and it does not have a reasonable relationship to the Parkwood rezoning itself. Thus, in accordance with the Code of Virginia, it's been deemed unreasonable, and the city cannot be in a position to accept that proffer. However, it's, it's important to note that that connection, we as, as the Planning Department and, and Public Works, recognize that improved connectivity, the more connectivity, the better. So, that we would have welcomed the opportunity to accept that proffer, should, should we have been permitted to per, per state-enabling legislation. However, with that being said, nothing at the time of development, should the owner control all of these properties, which, that they're well on their way to, to doing, would keep them from incorporating this connection as a part of their site development plan. So, they can certainly proceed with, with doing that at that time through our administrative process. It's just not appropriate to do it during the rezoning process through a proffer. So, on May 10th, the applicant did provide a revised proffer, as noted in our staff report, removing proffer eight. And that would have been after you received your packet. So, there, there is a, a new proffer associated with it. with it. With that being said, to speak a little bit more about the connection issue, we have Robert Lewis who can touch on it from the traffic's perspective as well.
Thank you, Kevin. So not going to spend a lot of time at this point in time, certainly available after your public hearing to speak further. But again, as we evaluate these, remember, we have standards that talk about interconnectivity of neighborhoods. It is our belief that better interconnectivity is always a good thing. This is a very positive. As Kevin noted, we can't accept this as a proffer today. I have had assurances from the developers' intent is to do this moving forward, which again is a good thing. And again, we also believe it actually provides better connectivity for the neighborhood that's behind, that would now have a much better right back out to Carolina Road and to some of the places they wish to go to. But again, I'll be available after your public hearing should you have desire for any additional conversation.
So in summary, as it relates to that issue, more connectivity, the better. We certainly believe it's important. It's just not appropriate for us to accept it through the proffering process in accordance with the rezoning. However, nothing precludes the developer from pursuing this connection point at the time of development plan for the site. So as it relates to the 2035 comprehensive plan, and now with the removal of proffer eight, we have looked at this rezoning and development application in accordance with the comp plan and the UDO, and we believe that we, it complies largely with the comp plan and the unified development ordinance, represents an opportunity for development in an area of the city that's in need of a variety of housing products such as this. So we are recommending the approvals with the modified proffer statement, removing proffer number eight. The Planning Commission, at their meeting of April 16th, 2024, by a vote of five to three, have voted to deny this application, or recommended denial of this application to you all this evening. That concludes my report on this item. I'll be happy to stand by at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we proceed, Vice Mayor Ward has a statement.
Yes. Due to personal interest, I am disqualified from participating in the discussion related for the items 12 and 13. I have given a letter noting my disqualification to the clerk.
Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address, and that is to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening, Mayor Dooman, members of City Council, City Staff. My name is Grady Palmer. My business address, 999 Waterside Drive in the city of Norfolk. I'll start with the Planning Commission recommendation slide there. So one of the words I've heard a lot tonight is the word collaboration. And since the Planning Commission voted on this application last month in April, there has been a lot of collaboration between the applicant and members of the South Side Meadows community and the Pleasant Hill community. We heard a lot about this, the need, and we've seen the photographs of the condition of South Side Meadows and the need for emergency access out of their neighborhood. I know it's in your package that the neighborhood floods along Carolina Road. They desperately need that secondary access, and so we received a lot of input. If you can move that back to... So I can, we can see the Dakota piece, that's fine. So a lot of things have happened since the Planning Commission meeting. We've met at least five times with members of the South Side Meadows community, Pleasant Hill community, to seek their input and to respond to questions about the proposal. Now, the applicant has also taken some pretty significant economic steps. And so you see there to the right of Valor Court, or just to the, above Valor Court and to the right, that's what we call the Dakota piece. So the applicant actually closed the purchase of the Dakota piece since the Planning Commission hearing happened in April. In addition, there's a little strip of land that separates the Dakota piece from the Parkwood piece. So you see the area in green there with the road that runs along the property line. There's a little narrow strip that runs just between the Dakota piece and the new public road that we would construct if this project were approved. That's what we call the Antinucci piece. And so that piece has actually been put under contract to purchase a crossing, across it for an emergency access. So if you can move... If you can get it to the slide that, the slide that shows the emergency access, Kevin. So the applicant has made the economic decision to put the Dakota parcel under separate, under new ownership, and to acquire or put under contract to acquire the Antinucci site because the emergency access out of South Side Meadows is that important. Now, I know Kevin explained proffer eight and the reasons that the city could not accept proffer eight tonight, but we will act like proffer eight. If this project is approved, we will act as if proffer eight was accepted by this council. It will be law unto us. We will deliver this emergency access to South Side Meadows. We think it's that important. They deserve it, and we're happy to have the opportunity to respond to their input on the project and their needs, stated needs for that emergency access. Now, we've talked a lot about the rezoning, but really, this project, along with the conditional use permit that you'll hear next for the Community College, the Paul D. Camp Community College is proposing to establish a trade school in the old Farmer Joe's retail building. And so really, for us, this is one large project. And so you can see that the roads that are being constructed, Kevin talked about the BMP, all of those, all of those improvements that are on the Parkwood site would actually benefit the Paul D. Camp Trade School proposal. And so really, one doesn't easily happen without the other. And so while the conditional use permit is a separate item for your consideration, really, from our perspective, we've designed this project to bear a lot of the cost for the Community College on our site. So all of the vehicular access coming off of Carolina Road, stormwater management is all going to be constructed by the Parkwood development to benefit the Paul D. Camp Trade School. And so if this project were not to be approved, the Parkwood project were not to be approved, the Paul D. Camp Community College site would have to be redesigned, their costs would go up considerably. And so really, it's one doesn't function without the other. And we really see the housing community building around the Paul D. Camp Trade School is really being a benefit to have your mixture of uses between the commercial, retail, trade school, and then the residential component. So just in closing here, this proposed residential community would be offered for sale at accessible price points for working families. So we estimate about 41 town homes that would average about $300,000 and 194 multifamily units that would average about $230,000 for sale. And so we're in close proximity to downtown. I think this site presents a great opportunity to create a new affordable community where residents can live close to where they work. And so before I sit down, I do have several letters of support, one from Ms. Council, who lives in South Side Meadows. You may have seen the Planning Commission, Ms. Council spoke in opposition to this project, and now has written a letter of support. She wanted to be here tonight, but her letter of support is for your review. I'm also submitting letters of support from Smart Growth Suffolk for both the rezoning and the conditional use permit for the Community College, and then a letter of support from the Suffolk Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance from Dr. Anita Lewis. So with that, to close your public hearing, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan. Our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor Dooman, members of City Council. I'm Will Holt, business address of 506 North Main Street, Franklin, Virginia. I'm the current president of the Paul D. Camp Community College Real Estate Foundation that would be the recipient of the property in your next application. I'm here tonight in support of this application and the companion application next on your agenda, seeking for the establishment of the trade school that the college would like to build on this property. The college is extremely excited about the prospects for this project. This trade school would house programs such as welding, forklift operators, other machinery, and these are programs that can be pursued in a relatively short period of time by students that can gain certifications and degrees that, you know, will be very life-changing to them. So this is a very important project for us. We agree with Mr. Palmer that these projects, you know, should be viewed together. Certainly from the college's perspective, this project would not be able to happen without the donation of this property and the infrastructure that's going in, certainly without some major changes to what's planned. Mr. Palmer mentioned the shared roadways, the utility, you know, connections and infrastructure, sewer, stormwater management. All of those are things that Coastal Virginia has partnered with the college on and really pursued this, this planning and this development together. So we would ask for your support of it tonight with both applications. And again, I view this, as Mr. Palmer mentioned, as really a good example of public and private sector working together. This is a project that wouldn't happen from the college without support from the private side that we've gotten from Coastal Virginia developers. We believe that some of the folks that would live in a community like this would be the same ones that would attend the trade school and could benefit from that. So again, thank you for, thank the staff for all their hard work on this application, the support of us throughout this time, and we appreciate it. Thank you for your consideration.
Welcome. Okay, our next speaker to speak in favor, we've got a little under two minutes left. Anyone else want to speak in favor?
Good evening, all y'all. Eric Tomlin, 316 Greenfield Crescent. My property backs up right to this property that they're proposing here. So we are, during the initial planning commission, we were completely against this because there was no communication between us and the developer. But since then, as they've mentioned, there's been numerous meetings held, and there's been a lot of adjustments made in community recipients and everything that's going on. So Ms. Council gave her letter. We are, we are now in favors, and we are continuing to work with this developer to make accommodations for the neighborhood, which is in a better benefit, better benefit to the neighborhood due to this egress that they're providing, along with the values of the community they're going to bring to the local South Side Meadows area. So we are in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker to speak in favor, we have a little under a minute left.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I am Arthuria Cahann. My address is 302 Webb Street here in Suffolk, 23434. Originally, I too was opposed to the approval of Parkwood, not because of the project itself, but because I had questions and concerns. I did not want any development near me that I knew nothing about or very little about. My questions have been answered and my concerns have been resolved. For these reasons, I support Parkwood and am requesting your approval. I am not the president nor the spokesperson, but our last meeting of our civic league, which is the South Suffolk Pleasant Hill Civic Association, we also agreed to support the project. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, that concludes our proponent time. We will now open the floor for proponents. We've got 15 minutes for those who would like to speak against this ordinance. Do we have anyone present that would like to speak?
Christopher Dove, 852 Colonel Lee Drive, Suffolk, Virginia. This is a great project to make housing available, affordable housing available in the area Suffolk. However, we have an issue that we same have issue most times now. The city staff has admitted that Kilby Shores does not have the capacity to meet the requirements for the new students. Fact, the UDO states the purpose and intent of an adequate public facility section is to ensure that public facilities needed to support new development meet or exceed the level of standards. Staff has admitted that it does not. It is to ensure that no rezoning is approved, which would cause a reduction in the level of service for any public facilities below the adopted level of service. Staff has admitted that it will not. And also to ensure that adequate public facilities needed to support new development are available concurrent with the impacts of such development. Staff has admitted that Kilby Shores will not have the capacity when this development is done, it will not have the capacity for six to 10 years. This violates the requirements of the UDO. If you want to go and delay the certificates of occupancy until they actually, Kilby Shores can support the additions, or you can convince the school board to go ahead and rezone so that they're no longer overcrowded, then I would have nothing to complain about. You would be following the law. But right now, you're ignoring the law. Thank you.
We have our next speaker to speak in opposition. Do we have anyone else to speak in opposition? Hearing none, we have a five-minute rebuttal period?
Thank you, Mayor. Grady Palmer, again, 999 Waterside Drive in the city of Norfolk. I would just add that we oftentimes hear this, and the reason that your staff recommends approval of these projects is when we can, the way the UDO, verbiage of the UDO uses is advanced capacity. And so this applicant has made a significant cash contribution to advanced capacity, and that is why the staff has recommended approval of this project, and it meets your UDO requirements. I would note that this will, this project will not be built immediately if the rezoning's approved. It will take a number of years, probably five to six years of timeline over, you know, after a year of site plan approval. So it will, it will take a number of years before it absorbs into the market. So it's certainly something that's not going to be built next year, and so with that, I'll stand by. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak during the rebuttal period? Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, a motion would be in order. Questions or comments? Councilman Williams.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to commend the developer for going out, taking the time to go out and talk to the citizens in South Side Meadows as well as the Pleasant Hill South Suffolk area. There was a number of meetings that took place, and I want to commend him for going out doing that. Prior to the planning commission, there were some personal things going on with the developer's family, and he wasn't able to attend a lot of the meetings. But since that planning council meeting and vote, the developer has done his due diligence and went out and really talked to people and addressed their concern. One of the major concerns was South Side Meadows community, the emergency egress/ingress. He's willing to put that in temporarily now until the second phase of this project is approved, hopefully. Again, I just want to commend him. I have one question, Mr. Wine, you can, you can help me with this. You can you can help me with this. It's where the connectivity is to Woodrow, Lewis, and Charlotte Avenue. Where it connects to Parkwood, it will extend to Cedar Street Extended. Is that what it's going to do? And then there's a stop sign there, and then it'll cross over to Lewis, Charlotte, and Woodrow?
Yeah, I believe that to be correct. There's some paper street essentially there that would be utilized to Cedar Street Extended. That would be improved at that point to make that connection.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'd like to I'd like to move that we approve this project, ma'am.
Do we get a motion for approval from Councilman Williams? Councilman Bennett?
Thank you. Kevin, I just want to ask one question on the emergency entrance there to Greenwill. Is that going to continue to be emergency only, or will it be used for regular access?
So at this point, there's there's no schedule, if you will, on emergency ingress/egress versus full access. I believe the intent of the developers ultimately to provide a full access as they pursue development of that adjacent Dakota parcel that's here. So with it not being outlined in the proffer, in the revised proffer statement that we received, the I do not know what the schedule is as far as the developer envisions it for that access. I believe the or what I do know is the overall intent is to provide a full access. It's not just an emergency access.
Okay. Overall intent?
Yes.
Is to do that? Okay.
Yes.
That answers my question.
That's correct. And I did want to provide one additional point while I'm here. I noted in the presentation that we did receive a revised proffer statement. This was received after packets were distributed. And what that proffer does is removes proffer eight, the one that we cannot accept. So it would be important to any motion to incorporate the amended proffers as received on May 10 by the city.
Okay, now second is motion.
Okay, we got a section second from Councilmember Bennett. Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Yeah, I'd like to.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I'd like to move that we approve the project with the amended version of the current proffer.
Can I throw this away?
So the motion would be to approve the rezoning with the amended proffer received on May 10?
May 10.
2024.
Yes. What do you think? What do you say? Councilman Bennett, are you okay with what they said? He said what you said, and he said it's okay. The first, second, we're done. Okay, we've got a motion for approval approval as amended from Councilman Williams, seconded by Councilman Bennett. Is there any further discussion of the motion?
Hello? You still have this is still on, so.
They made me turn the light out. Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Oh, there we go. I just had so I want to say thank you very much to the everyone involved with this project, because I happen to be at the planning commission meeting, and the concerns with the neighboring properties and the connectivity were were, you know, loud and clear. So I applaud your efforts to make this work for the whole community. I think it's a good project. I do have one question, and I don't know either Mr. Wine or Mr. Lewis. I know that there's some significant stormwater issues in the surrounding properties. Do we think that the stormwater improvements with this this particular project are going to help alleviate some of the neighboring problems?
Maybe. One of the things we have found over the last few years, one of the issues is in the Greenfield Crescent neighborhood, they no longer have a viable homeowners association and are maintaining their own infrastructure. So we have been working within our ability to try to maintain. All of their water actually drains to the front towards Carolina Road, goes out under Carolina Road. This this neighborhood, this new neighborhood, all their water is going to actually bypass that neighborhood. So again, as we go through the design process, we will certainly use every opportunity we can to try to make sure we do what we can to enhance that. But again, we may have some additional work that has to be done in Greenfield at a future date if we can find funding to do so.
But we certainly aren't going to make it any worse.
We should this will not make it worse, because like I said, that water from that new neighborhood is actually going out and around and coming down the highway.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, do we have any other comments before we vote? Councilman Fossey?
I just want to make more comment that I think that this collaborative package that is put together has helped clarify a lot of misconceptions or unknowns. And I'm so glad that the developer had an opportunity to to work with the community. It shows that they're willing to go in and do the right thing to bring this community into play. And, you know, I think the attorney said it best, without this community, you don't have a community college trade school, period, unless somebody can come up with a whole lot of money to fix the problem. So this is going to be a win-win for everybody in the end. So I want to applaud the developer and all the community that was involved, as well as the staff, to to find a way to make this kind of work for everybody. So thank you.
Counsel, any other comments? I'd like to make one comment before I call for the vote, and I too would like to thank Coastal Virginia Partners for their generous donation of the land that's being used for the Workforce Development Center. I'm elated that we're able to put this together with the workforce center and the surrounding housing. This is going into an area that has been, I guess dormant would be a good word. There hasn't been much activity in that area at all, and I think it's going to be a huge asset to the community as far as the improvements, increased property values, and provide some more amenities as well. And I do want to thank the developer for engaging and speaking to the neighbors, and they also presented a proffer that really we could not legally accept because there was not a need for it. But he chose to do that once he spoke to the citizens to to address the concerns that they had for this to move forward with the support of the surrounding neighbors. So once again, I'm I can't wait for this whole project to get underway and see what it looks like in a couple of years. I think we're all going to be very, very pleased. So with that being said, we got a motion on the floor for approval in a second. If there's no other discussion, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, our next public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish schools, business, or trade use on property located at 612 Carolina Road, zoning map 34, parcel 83C, account number 104000264, and this is CUP 2024-2. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Again, Kevin Wine will provide the staff report. Kevin?
And thank you again, Mr. Manager. It's again Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is the companion application, if you will, to the Parkwood rezoning. This is a conditional use permit request to establish a school specifically related to the teaching of business and the trades on the site formerly known as the Farmer Joe's Building. The parcel up for discussion is located in the Core Support Use District within our central growth area. So currently, this property is zoned B2. This is not a rezoning. It will remain B2. To the north of the property is vacant and forested commercial properties zoned B2 as well. To the south of the property is the South Side Meadows subdivision consisting of single-family homes zoned RC residential compact. To the east of the property are single-family detached homes zoned RLM, and the west is Carolina Road, and it includes some industrial uses. So in this case, the applicant is seeking a conditional use permit to establish a trade school. This is in order to establish a Paul D. Camp Trade School on property located at 612 Carolina Road. The applicant is proposing to convert the existing 10,000 square foot building and create an additional 5,000 square foot addition, making the total square footage of the building 15,000 square feet for the conversion into a trade school. The intent of Paul D. Camp at this site will be utilization of the facility to instruct students in very trade-specific subject matters related to logistics, technology, as well as technical skills in the fields of maritime construction and welding and other related activities to the shipbuilding trade. The trade vocational school is anticipated to serve anywhere from 75 up to 200 students daily. The provided conceptual layout that you have in front of you depicts that the primary access will be taken from a future right-of-way that would serve the Parkwood development and construct it on site. The subject parcel is located in the special corridor overlay district, and that's important to this case because the the parking area, as depicted on this conceptual layout, does encroach into what that special corridor overlay district setback is. However, they have received an administrative variance, offering some relief of that parking area as well as some associated access drives from our zoning administrator. So so they do have that. As part of the application, we have a visual rendering provided by the school. That is what you see in front of you. The Department of Public Utilities, Public Works Engineering, and Public Works Traffic, they have reviewed the proposed request, and they've expressed no concerns, and they will continue to verify compliance with our development standards at the time of site plan. As it relates to parking, there is one space, one parking space per 200 square feet required or a maximum of 150,000 150 square feet to one space. The submitted conceptual plan in this case depicts 75 total parking spaces, which is the minimum required for the proposed use. So it does meet that minimum. So in looking at our criteria established for conditional use permits, staff believes that this trade school can operate in a fashion compatible with surrounding land uses and offers an important redevelopment of of an existing commercial site along Carolina Road in the south side of the city. As such, we believe it complies with the 2035 comp plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. At their meeting on April 16, 2024, and by a vote of eight to zero, the planning commission are forwarding this application to you all with a recommendation of their approval. That concludes my presentation on this item. I'll be happy to stand by at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council and staff. My name is Grady Palmer. My business address, 999 Waterside Drive in the city of Norfolk. And I want to be brief here. I just want to say this is a great public-private partnership on behalf of the Coastal Virginia Developers Team, Mr. Arnett, Mr. Howard, Mr. Stein, and the entire team. It was a privilege to play a small part in in seeing this come to fruition. The the community college is doing the bulk of the work here. The images that you that you'll see, they're they're going to accomplish all of that on their side of the property. So this is going to be a wonderful opportunity for the for the city of Suffolk and South Suffolk in particular. I know the Coastal Virginia team is committed to South Suffolk, and I hope this demonstrates that commitment. So with that, I'll stand by for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our next speaker to speak in favor.
Good evening again, Mayor Dimon and members of city council. Will Holt, 506 North Main Street, Franklin, Virginia, the current president of the Paul D. Camp Community College Real Estate Foundation. I'll be brief as well. We heard from us on the last application. Just take this opportunity to thank the city and thank the city staff especially. They've certainly made all resources available to us during this application period and been very, very good to us, as well as thanking the Coastal Virginia Developers Team for gracious donation of this property and the the cooperation and working together on a project that we think will be great for the city. I'm available for questions as well, but thank you all so much.
Thank you. Have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance? Do we have anyone else present to speak in favor? If not, do we have anyone to speak in opposition? Is anyone present that would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing no other speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, an ordinance has been presented for your consideration. Councilman Williams?
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Williams. Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Do we have any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, we'll now move on to ordinances. We do have an ordinance this evening authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Nansman Indian Nation for the transfer of a portion of tax map parcel number 10 asterisk 46 and to execute certain related documents. This item was continued from the March 2024 city council meeting. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Kevin Hughes, FDC manager, will provide the staff report. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, before you is the memorandum of understanding related to tax map 1046, also known as Manonoc Town. Just going to run through a few slides that does a very brief history and talks a little bit in generalities regarding the the MOU for you. So the the site outlined in white here, a little over 71 acres adjacent to Lone Star Lakes Park. There's an aerial of it against the river as well. So going back to 2013, the city of Suffolk and the Nansman Indian Tribal Association, at the time a nonprofit, worked together on a deed where the 71 acres was transferred from the city to the association. There was a vision to create Manonoc the Manonoc Town Project, which was a essentially a tourism-generated program that really pushed towards a Native American culture and heritage. Within that transaction, it was outlined in a development agreement. That development agreement outlined that if Manonoc Town did not come to fruition within five years, the city had a reverter clause related to the property. Obviously, that that did not come to fruition, and that property has come back to the city. In 2018, the Nansman Indian Nation was federally recognized as a sovereign government, so no longer the nonprofit status. This creates a new opportunity and a new step for for the Indian Nation, where there's a considerable amount of opportunity related to federal funding and programming that they can realize. They've also shared with this council on two different occasions, as well as most recently during the public hearing on March 20, that the vision for Manonoc Town has has evolved. It's more focused on conservation and education and less on tourism as a driver. So before you is a MOU, but that MOU is essentially attached to the the request, and that that request is the transfer of Manonoc Town, that 71-acre site, from the city to the nation now, not the nonprofit, the federally recognized nation. This would be free from any restrictions with that transaction. What the MOU before you does is begin to establish the relationship in this new evolved vision. Hitting on some of the highlights is the property would go under a conservation easement specifically with Ducks Unlimited. That really ensures what's in place today will remain in place, so you won't see large-scale development go in into the site. There is a utility easement asset on site that will remain with the city, and a utility easement will also be a stay on the site and allow us the ability to access the site and the easement if need be. The nation will provide reasonable public access during daylight hours to the walking trails adjacent to Lone Star Lakes, the goal being the two properties to work together into the future. The city will continue to support the powwow, as well as provide responses for public safety. With that, it is an understanding that the nation will pay their real estate taxes. As they realize their federal recognition, they may not have to pay that tax. However, they are willing to pay a fee in lieu of that tax. We would also establish a city-nation committee that would begin to to meet and talk We would also establish a city-nation committee that would begin to meet and talk about issues of joint concern and opportunity. We would have at least two members of the local government on that committee, and we'd begin meeting within 60 days of the MOU's execution. The nation would continue community outreach efforts to include the pow-wow programs with the city schools, a boat launch, and a lot of improvement in quality of water programs with the adjacent Nansman River, and they'd continue to collaborate with both Parks and Recreation and the Health Department to expand recreation and leisure opportunities for citizens and visitors. And that concludes my overview.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hughes. Council, an ordinance has been presented for council's consideration. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. We've been a long time coming to this moment. I would, as a city, as a council, as a community, as citizens of Suffolk, that I would say to you that the Nansman Indian Nation has waited a really long time, hundreds, hundreds of years, to resolve this particular situation. I think we have a really amazing opportunity here to combine our beautiful Lone Star Lakes Park, just over 1,000 acres, the adjacent property in Chukatuck of the Glasscock property that will offer active Parks and Rec opportunities, and then a nationally-recognized Native American tribe to have a facility on the other side of the Lone Star property. I think it, I think history will look kindly on us for supporting this effort and for being a part of this very historic moment. And with that, I would like to make a motion to approve this ordinance.
Okay, we got a motion for approval. Councilmember Butler Barlow, Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Shelley, for the comments. I too think that this is an opportunity for the future, that we'll see some, I may not see it in my time, but hopefully a little bit, but as they move forward with their projects and bring their, you know, different ideas to the table on how they want to proceed with the piece of property, and talking about making an oyster bed could help, you know, invigorate the river as well right there, and having some access would also be great for maybe a kayak launch in and out to be able to come to the property. But it's a nice piece of property, and there is a standing plaque there or a monument of when this was done back, I don't know, 2013, maybe somewhere in there. But I do think it's going to be a benefit to everybody in the future, and we will, I am hoping that I'm going to see some progress of things that we haven't seen that was told to us that was going to be done in the previous years, so we hope that will change. And maybe before my time leaving this earth, I get to see some of those improvements. But the next generation should benefit greatly from it. And to preserve that area and put it, you know, have that preservation of that area is going to be unique, because nothing's going to ever get built there. It's never going to become, you know, a housing area or anything of this nature. It's going to remain part of the park area, which is great, because it's a wonderful piece of property out there. The whole park is just wonderful. It's underutilized, but it's coming. It's coming to, to make it better in the future. So with that, I'm going to have the privilege of going ahead and giving a second to Ms. Shelley Barlow's to approve this one tonight.
Councilmember Johnson?
And I'd just like to say thank you to the Nansmans for persevering, for working with the city, and we look forward to the future. We have a lot to offer each other, so we are very proud of what we've done. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Yeah, I'd just like to say this is not just, I think the community, the city of Suffolk have been hoping and wishing this would come along. I think I was, 20 years ago, I was on committee, and I just wanted to let her know that I hope that we do work together, and that's what we need to do. You know, can't blame on the past, and just hope that we can work together. Just don't blame it on you. Let's get work together, make Lone Star what I think most of the city of Suffolk want, especially myself, and I think that what y'all want, I think that if we work together, we can make it a place that be well represented from both the nation and the city of Suffolk. God bless.
Council, any other questions or comments? If not, before we vote, I've just got a couple of comments. This has been a long time coming. It's been a rather long journey, with a few bumps along the way and some consternation probably on both sides, but I am more than pleased with the memorandum of understanding and the willingness of the Nansman tribe to obviously, what I consider to be forming a partnership with the city of Suffolk, a true partnership. And I look at the memorandum of understanding, and certain words jump out at me. Agreed to work together, to work together to implement programs. Community outreach. Complement education initiatives in Suffolk Public Schools. Contribute to the city's goal of leisure, health, and wellness around Lone Star Lakes. Collaborate with the Suffolk Public Health Department and the Suffolk Department of Parks and Rec to expand access to public health-focused information and unique recreation activities. Improvement of the overall water quality of the Nansman River. And also to establish the city-nation committee, which will discuss issues of joint concern. I don't think that there could be a better partnership at a better time, in a better place, under any circumstances. So I am anxiously looking forward to what the future holds for us. I have no doubt in my mind that it will be a very successful partnership that, when it all comes down to, will benefit the tribe, the city of Suffolk, and our citizens. So thank you very much, and at this time, I'll ask for the vote if there are no other questions or comments. Councilmembers, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved with seven affirmative votes and Councilmember Bennett abstaining.
All right. Okay, we'll now move to resolutions, and we have done this evening. We do have a staff report regarding significant land use applications. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Kevin Wine will present the staff report also. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Once again, Mayor, Vice Mayor. I'll be brief, but as you recall, over a year ago now, we told you all that we developed a policy in which we would bring significant land item, significant land use items to your attention prior to them going before Planning Commission, essentially building in an additional 30 days as it relates to their review time. We have two that we want to discuss with you this evening. One is White Marsh Plaza. This is at White Marsh, Lake Kennedy and Davis. This is a rezoning application, as is rezoning RZN 2023 014. That's Bell Harbor. That is a master plan community there at Temple Bethel, in which they are going to transfer some, some land rights between parcels within the development. Here is the White Marsh Plaza. I think we're all familiar with this. It is 1226 White Marsh Road. It is zoned B2, right on White Marsh Road. It's a shopping center now, and the developer in this case is seeking a rezoning from B2 to RU12. The property is 7.5 acres. Nearly one acre will be retained as commercial, ultimately what they envision for the property's 84 attached condominiums. The proposed density in this case would be 8.4 units per acre. This is scheduled for Planning Commission in June, and that would put it tentatively before you all at your second meeting in July. This didn't necessarily hit the threshold of 100 units or 100 acres, certainly, or 100,000 square feet, but it is a significant redevelopment of a significant site in the city of Suffolk. So we wanted you all to have additional information of this one in advance. And here's the conceptual plan as provided. You can see the non-shaded area up front would be retained for commercial, with the rest being developed for single-family attached product in a condominium form of ownership. The second one is in Bell Harbor. This is located just off of Bridge Road. Three separate properties are involved here. They identify them as certain tracks. I'll get into that in a moment. But essentially, what's happening here is they're transferring the rights to 144 already-approved multifamily units from one parcel, one area of the development, to another tract within the development. So it's essentially a zoning swap. It involves three tracks, Tracks 11, 2A, and 2B. 2A and 2B, they currently have the rights to that 144-approved multifamily units. Track 11, where they would be transferred, is currently zoned O and I. So Tracks 2A and 2B would be rezoned from RU, that's what they are today, to O and I, and then Track 11 would be rezoned from O and I to RU18. That additional density there comes from the fact that Track 11 is much smaller than Tracks 2A and 2B, so in order to accommodate the density on Track 11, additional density would, would be needed to allow for all of those 144 units to be constructed. So it's not an increase in units, only an increase in density on the parcel in which they are proposed. This, like the White Marsh Plaza, application is scheduled for Planning Commission in June and would tentatively come before you all for consideration in July. That concludes my presentation on these items. I'll be happy to stand by if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wine. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Councilman Fawcett?
Kevin, just to be clear, on the Bell Harbor unit, that's the master plan for Temple Bethel.
Yes.
So we, as it stands today, if they were to build on the track that they were on, they have a by right to build that, do they not?
That is correct.
So all they're doing is basically just moving over to a different parcel, which is adjacent to it pretty much, but not doing anything different in the master plan than they could have done anyway by building these additional units. All they're doing is upping the density. That's it.
That's correct. If this was a traditional master plan community in which you did not have zoning designations underneath, and they were both, you know, identified for residential, this would be a non-issue, but in this case, you have one O and I parcel, and then RU over here. They're just taking that RU, putting it on the O and I, and vice versa.
Yeah, because the master plan through Temple Bethel has been in play for a number of years.
Yes.
This goes back...
It has quite a history.
It has a history about it, so, and I've followed it pretty closely, but I'm looking forward to this coming in July, because I think this is a good project that'll come before us. Thanks.
Council, any other questions or comments? Kevin? All right, thank you, sir. We'll now move to motions. We do have a motion to schedule a City Council work session for Wednesday, June 5th, 2024, at 4:00 PM, unless canceled by the mayor and city manager. And a motion would be in order. Councilman Johnson?
So move.
Got a motion for approval. Councilman Johnson, Councilman Williams?
Second.
Second from Councilman Williams. Do you have any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers this evening? And if so, please explain the guidelines.
We do have non-agenda speakers this evening. Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before City Council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Chris Dove, Christopher Dove, 852 Colonel Mead Drive, representing Self, regarding response to Mayor and Vice Mayor's comments at the May 1st, 2014, 2024 meeting.
Last council meeting, Vice Mayor Ward and I had a misunderstanding. I'm happy to report that after conferring with each other after the meeting, we mis-corrected that or resolved that misunderstanding, and we both understand, have a better understanding of where each of us was coming from. Thank you, Vice Mayor. My hope is that the Vice Mayor will vote against the further overcrowding of the mainly minority students attending Elephant's Fork Elementary in the future. Last council meeting, the mayor took opportunity to ridicule me. He said that I did not understand the UDO because I had lost all the cases I had filed against the city. He further stated that I had lost the city, or cost the city thousands of dollars of defending against my filings. These comments are false and misleading. The court dismissed my cases not because of my understanding of the UDO was incorrect, but because the court ruled citizens do not have the right to force the city to enforce the law. The court never ruled on the validity of my issues. As for cost, the mayor knows that the city's staff are paid whether they defend the city or not. No outside attorneys were hired to defend the city. The city did not spend any more money than it had already planned to do whether, or it defended or responded to my cases or not. One second. The mayor understands that overcrowded school, the overcrowding of Suffolk Public Schools is systematic racism, because it disproportionately impacts minorities, not because of individual racist acts or attitudes of any one individual. I am not an attorney, nor am I a used car salesman. I am an analyst who bases his statements on facts. Fact, the UDO states any development or use not in compliance with the provisions of the ordinance is prohibited and shall be referred to as unlawful development or use. Fact, the UDO states disregarding any provision of this ordinance by any person shall be unlawful, even if they're a used car salesman. Fact, the UDO states the purpose and intent of adequate public facilities section is to ensure that the public facilities needed to support new development meet or exceed the level of services standards. Staff admitted that they do not. To ensure that no rezoning is approved, which would cause a reduction in the level of service of any public facilities below the adopted level of service. Staff admitted that it, this, the rezoning would. And to ensure that the adequate public facilities needed to support new development are available concurrent with the impacts of such development. Staff admitted that they would not be. Fact, the UDO states variances, exceptions, or waivers shall not have the effect of nullifying the intent or purpose of these regulations. And the city council shall not approve variances, exceptions, or waivers if it would be detrimental to the public safety, health, or welfare. Staff admits that it would be detrimental to the student welfare if you approved that zoning. Mayor Doeman stated he intend to disregard the adequate public facilities and variance provisions in order to further overcrowd Elephant's Fork Elementary and King's Fork High Schools. His plan ignores the level of service standards and the concurrent impact requirements, and will be detrimental to the welfare and the safety of the primarily black and brown students who attend these schools. students who attend these schools. The fact that you allow this, each and every one of you disgusts me.
Our next speaker is Renee Townsend, 156 West Washington Street regarding Virginia ABC policies regarding open-door alcohol policies for her restaurant and TGIF activities.
Good evening, Mayor Duman, council members and the city staff. My name is Renee Townsend at 156 West Washington Street in Suffolk, Virginia, 23434. I'm the owner of Renee's Restaurant and Lounge, and I have been contacting Deanna Holt, Rachel, in reference to a special ABC license. And with no prevail or no real concrete information, knowing that the festival park is going to open June 14th, and we still haven't got resolution if the city obtained a special ABC license that allows bar goers to take their drink outside and to move from bar to bar and to outside to the festival park. These are all designated and encompass just a few blocks, and this is a practice that's in both the city of Portsmouth, the city of Norfolk, Hampton, and Virginia Beach. With the impending opening of the downtown festival park, this can be a very well be a Suffolk practice. It should various and establish a great fit for the city to continue to grow. And thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Andrea Payer-D. Our next speaker is Valeria Rose, 168 Preserve Way, representing Self regarding maintenance concerns at the Preserve at Lake Mead.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Valeria Rose. I reside at 168 Preserve Way in Suffolk, 23434, in the Preserve at Lake Mead. My husband and I purchased our home in April of 2022. We purchased and therefore invested in Suffolk as a growing city and community with country roots. The growth is evident in the current city projects such as Festival Park on Washington Street and the road widening and resurfacing projects on Route 58 and Route 460. The country roots are evident in the working farms and beautiful country roads that my husband and I like to ride on our motorcycles. Unfortunately, where we stand today, we would not have purchased our home in Suffolk had we known then what we know now. From our vantage point, it seems that the city's development efforts exceed its capacity to ensure that projects are completed in accordance with approved plans and in compliance with its own ordinances. Our community, the Preserve at Lake Mead, is an embarrassment. We purchased a half a million dollar home in what has become an unkempt, unmaintained neighborhood. The lack of maintenance is no fault of ours or our neighbors. The community neglect falls squarely on the developers' nonexistent, at worst delayed at best upkeep of common areas. I have a couple of maps here. My husband submitted Freedom of Information Act for the plans. This is a representation of our community, the Preserve at Lake Mead. We reside in the start of Phase Two. This is Pitchkettle Road here. We're at the end of Preserve Way. We live at a corner lot next to and in front of what is supposed to be active open space, as denoted, and I know this is small from where you sit, but the AOS represents active open space, which I'm sure you're all very familiar with. We live at this corner lot, as I said. Although we knew when purchasing our home that the proposed amenities were subject to change, we never imagined that the nature's playground, as it's called, adjacent to us or the multi-use lawn behind us would really become two or three or six feet of weeds that we would have to repeatedly call City Community Development Office and Councilman Johnson about. Neither did we know that we would have to repeatedly call city offices and our councilmen to request that the walking trail be laid in accordance with the development plans. The trail was finally laid, starting in December of 2023. My husband took videos. It was December 5th, when the 15th, excuse me, when they started that work. Here we are less than six months later. Today is May 15th, so we're five months out, and I have a picture of what that trail looks like today. I know this picture is a little dark, but this was laid five months ago, and this is what it currently looks like. The trail is barely usable. The multi-use lawn, which appears on the approved development plans as active open space, is nothing more than a site of weeds and construction debris. Currently, there are 80 homes in the Preserve at Lake Mead that show, excuse me, that show on the city's property search site as purchased by individuals or families. So not homes that are still listed under an LLC or listed under the developer. The median assessed value of those 80 homes is $557,200. I didn't say before this, but I'm a statistician, so I did the work on these numbers. The total assessed value of those 80 homes is nearly $48.5 million. At a tax rate of $1.09 per $100, residents of the preserves at Lake Mead contribute $528,586 of net new taxes to the city of Suffolk annually. That calculation is based on occupancy today. Our collective community contribution in taxes will grow as additional homes in the community are built and sold. Given the current state of our community maintenance and upkeep, we are concerned that new homes will be unsold due to community blight. We are also concerned about potential resale value, as there is nothing about the development right now that would attract new buyers. In fact, my realtor asked me recently about showing someone the home, a home in our neighborhood, and asked what I thought, and I suggested that she run. She thought I was exaggerating. She came out and was surprised at how things looked two years after we purchased our home. I come here today not seeking special favor. I come here as a resident of Suffolk who needs the support of my elected officials to get things done. We are not seeking a handout. We simply seek to be treated fairly and in alignment with our contribution to this growing community. Thank you.
Daniel Blue, 168 Preserve Way, representing Self regarding maintenance concerns at Preserve, at the Preserve at Lake Mead.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Blue. I live at 168 Preserve Way, Suffolk, Virginia. That was my wife. You have made her mad. Okay? I came here a year ago and asked you to help me. Right? And I'm not as articulate, I'm not as educated as my wife, but I tried to explain to you that you've allowed these developers to sell us a bill of goods. As my wife said, we spent $550,000 on that house, and it looks like a neighborhood in decline, not a new neighborhood. I'm a little bit nervous, so give me some space here. I made some notes. I am displeasured and agitated at the continued lack of enforcement of housing code and regulations as pertain to overgrown areas, grading, weeds, trash, and debris adjacent to my home. And it appears as a poverty-stricken area. This is the Preserve at Lake Mead. It's three years old. Three. Currently, the guidelines, the city guidelines, as well as the HOA guidelines, require that my lawn be maintained, or it will result in fines. So my yard is compliant, graded, and clear of all debris. However, the Worth Construction Company, the developer who owns my HOA, is not held to the same standard. Therefore, 6.2 acres adjacent to my home are unbearable. None of you would live there. If you lived there, it would be taken care of. Homeowners should not be required to pay twice for the development of these areas. And what I mean by that is that we've paid for these areas to be developed and maintained by the purchase of our homes, but if this developer is allowed to kick the can and not take care of these areas, then we're going to have to pay for it to be developed again, the open areas. I got a estimate from the internet to hydroseed and grade one acre of land is anywhere from $15,000 to $45,000 an acre. That would make each homeowner of 167 units, when this place is completed, liable from anywhere from $538 to $1,077 additionally for something we already paid for. We have had neighbors have erroneous fines imposed on them, sort of intimidation tactics when complaining to the developer about these problems, and we've had no support from the municipality. We keep hearing, "Well, there's growing pains." "Well, we don't have enough inspectors to get out here." But there's inspectors running through there all the time. I just don't want this developer to walk away from this project, and it's uncompleted. And I'm sitting there waiting to see if they do what they promised you when they came and sold this idea to you. Thank you very much for your time. I hope you understand that I am upset about you not defending me in this regard. Good night.
That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move to the business. Do we have any additions?
No, Mayor.
Counsel, do you have any new business that would require action in council at this time? Hearing none, we'll move to announcements and comments, and I'll ask at this time if Media and Community Relation Director Jennifer Moore has any announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, city manager. We'll start the announcements off tonight with news from the Suffolk Public Works Traffic Engineering Department as they advise of an upcoming road closure of Manning Road due to paving and construction activities. Manning Road towards the intersection of Holland Road will be closed for maintenance starting at 7:00 AM on Monday, May 20th and conclude by 5:00 PM Friday, May 24th. Motorists should be prepared to adhere to designated detours or plan an alternative route. These dates and times are subject to change based on weather conditions. The city of Suffolk is excited to announce a call for applications for the Downtown Suffolk Advisory Committee. This committee plays a crucial role in shaping the future of downtown Suffolk and is instrumental in guiding its development. Established to provide input and recommendations on matters related to downtown revitalization, the Downtown Suffolk Advisory Committee serves as a vital link between the community and the city government. Members of the committee will be tasked with promoting economic development, preserving historical landmarks, enhancing public spaces, and fostering a vibrant downtown atmosphere. The committee will consist of 11 members appointed by city council, representing various sectors of the community, including residents, business owners, property owners, and other stakeholders. Applicants interested in serving on this Downtown Suffolk Advisory Committee are encouraged to visit the city's website at sufficva.us to access the online application form and review the eligibility criteria. The application deadline is July 1st. The Commonwealth Attorney's Office has kicked off the registration for its annual youth CSI forensic camp. Students aged 12 to 15 years old can learn about criminal law, evidence collection and preservation, and courtroom testimony, and how it all comes together to catch the bad guy. The camp will be held the week of June 17th from 8:30 AM to noon, and the deadline to register is June 5th. Applications and waivers can be found online at the city's Commonwealth Attorney's webpage at sufficva.us. The city of Suffolk Public Safety Committee is pleased to announce the launch of its new public safety portal. This online platform empowers citizens to share suggestions on community safety improvements and public safety matters in a quick and easy manner. Users also have the option to submit anonymously. Residents are reminded that this portal is not intended for reporting criminal activity and in the event of emergency to please dial 911. For more information on the public safety committee and the portal, visit sufficva.us. And the Suffolk Mosquito Control Department reminds residents that the arrival of spring has spurred the emergence of mosquitoes, and they are offering free mosquito dunks to residents. In addition to the free dunks, the Mosquito Control Department is actively monitoring the city and administering mosquito treatments as needed to ensure the comfort and safety of citizens. To receive free mosquito dunks, individuals must be 18 years or older, provide proof of residency within the city, and present a valid photo ID. These dunks are available at all Suffolk Fire Station's mosquito control offices at 800 Carolina Road, City Hall, and every rec center and library within the city. For more information, visit sufficva.us/mosquitocontrol. And the Suffolk Parks and Rec Department offers hundreds of fun activities, but this summer, it invites residents to complete 50 of them to commemorate the city's 50th anniversary. To participate, individuals can pick up a game board from one of the three freestanding recreation centers or download the digital online version. Participants should travel throughout Suffolk's extensive parks network and complete at least 40 of the 50 activities, marking them off on their game board. Game boards must be submitted back to Parks and Rec by 5:00 PM on Friday, August 9th to receive an instant prize and to be entered into a grand prize drawing. Completion of all 50 activities earns participants two entries into the grand prize drawing. For more information, visit parksandrecs.com. And lastly, on your screen are the various ways residents and business can stay connected to the city of Suffolk. Thank you and have a good night.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Moore. We'll now move on to announcements by council. Councilmember Butler Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say a couple of thank yous. First, to the Downtown Rotary Club for having me at their meeting last Thursday. I enjoyed being with the group, and as usual, I was talking about agriculture. I know that surprised everyone, but I appreciate the invitation and enjoyed having a good discussion with that group. I also want to send a thanks to the Early Childhood Development Commission, who invited me to their banquet last Friday night at the Cultural Arts Center. It was very nice. We celebrated our teachers and our, especially our early education teachers, and it was a great event, and I appreciate being invited to be there. And lastly, I just, I want to thank this- And lastly, um, I just, I wanna thank this council for the vote for the Nansman Indian Nation and Madonoc Town. I know this has been a long journey. I know that there has been a lot of concerns. I know that the comfort level is not as high for some of us as for others of us, and I wanna assure all the members of this council that I will continue to work to make this new collaboration a successful, historic partnership, and that it will be a benefit to everyone in our city. And I, I just, I can't thank everyone enough. I know it's hard to forget the history, but I just wanna say thank you for your vision for the future and for the great opportunity that this brings, and I, I so appreciate it and thank everyone and hope you'll come out to Chuck Tuck Borough and check it out. And with that, I'll say goodnight.
Councilwoman Bennett?
Uh, well, I, I don't have much to say tonight. I just, uh, the couple that came up really sort of disturbing. Mr. Manager, what is it that developer responsibilities are in these neighborhoods that they're developing with overgrown stuff like that? They've been here two, two or three times about that.
I know staff had visited out there with them before. I'll follow up with our, our community development staff and, and try to get back some information for you.
Okay. I think the developers should be held some responsible for taking care of those areas around those people's homes like that, and the city shouldn't have to go out there and make them do it. That should be their responsibility. We signed on to give them, uh, condition use permit or redevelopment or zoning or whatever to get it built, and I think they should live up to the standards that was put before them, and we should not have to have residents to live in neighborhoods like that and not getting the service that they need. So I strongly support, uh, getting something done with that, because I don't like to see people, I wouldn't wanna live there like that, so I totally agree. With that, that's all I had to say tonight. It was very disturbing to me.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Well, I'm gonna continue for a minute, Leroy, because I've been back there many times. I still go back there, and I am as concerned as I have been. What's happened in that community is we haven't, it's one of those communities, the homes are close together, and all of this property is supposed to be maintained by the developer until he hands it over to the HOA, and he's not even close to the development end, but he is not maintaining the property. And we have been out there, I've reported it many times, but it's just not working. There needs to be some kind of reprimand that we can give to the developer. It shouldn't be happening. So we'll continue to try to work with you, and I, I do go in there and look at it regularly, and it, you're not the only ones that are concerned. It's, it's a community concern, so I think it's, it should come back on us as well. The only other thing I'm gonna say is, um, thank you to Carter Hotchkiss for giving two benches to the new park. That's what, a good citizen, he did, he's done us a big, big, um, plus. Nansman Indians, I'll just follow up with, with Shelley. I think I'm, I'm very supportive. I think they bring a lot to our city, and I think they're gonna help us maintain our city in a way that is gonna be very unique. The only other thing I'll say is, um, and I'm, I'm gonna say this only because I'm gonna say it, Friday, when the transportation was so horrible all over Tidewater, I was trying to deliver Mother's Day flowers, it was a nightmare. But my point is, what came from the whole thing to me is, I think we as a city have got to really take a hard look at our transportation systems. I know we can't fix them overnight, but we need to be aware that when we have a shutdown like we had Friday all over Tidewater, it affects us. And the rest of Tidewater needs to understand that it affects them when we're shut down as well. So it's something we've really gotta look at in the future, and, um, it's, it's a big, it's a big thing to bite off, but I know it's something we've got to. Fortunately, we have good people working for us, but this transportation issue is all over the region, it's not just here in Suffolk. So with that, I'll say goodnight.
Councilwoman Rector?
Uh, first off, I attended the Twenty Under Twenty Celebration sponsored by the Hampton Roads Workforce Council, and Suffolk had three recipients of the award. They were Ashley Bush, William Henderson, and Graham Webb, and we went to a ceremony at the Dollar General or Dollar Tree Center over in Chesapeake, and they had a nice little meal and presented out nice little awards and talked about each one of the kids and their contributions and what they had done. So Suffolk should be proud that out of, out of the twenty people, three of them were from Suffolk. I want to thank the city for getting the application online for the Downtown Advisory Committee. Um, I know that a lot of people have been asking me when that was gonna happen, so I'm glad that that time is finally here. And then, you know, also piggybacking on what everybody else has said about the transfer of the property back to the Nansman Nation, uh, over there at Madonoc Town, as long of a struggle as it's been and what was done before, you know, I guess with putting the plaque out there, I hope that maybe the city can plan some kind of little ceremony around the actual deed transfer so that everybody in the city can have a chance to, um, fully comprehend what we have done. And I, I wish Nikki was still here, because I remember when we talked about this, uh, before, they have a saying or something about not worried about the next seven years, but the seventh generation, or, or something along those lines. So I, I, I'm excited with what they can do to bring that property back to its original condition, um, for not only our generation, my children's generation, and my grandchildren's generation, but for generations to come after that. And with that, I will say goodnight.
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. First, I, I would like to thank the, um, developer for wanting to invest in the south side of town, something, um, that's way overdue. We're glad that, um, that things are starting to happen on this end of town. Paul D. Camp Community College Trade School, um, it will contribute to the growing needs of our, for skilled trades and higher learning education to our citizens, something major, and it's happening right here, right here, just downtown, south side of Suffolk, and it's just a great thing. To Robert Lewis and staff, um, the Turtleton Road Covert Rehabilitation Project, also known as Turtleton Road Bridge, thank you, thank you, thank you for finally getting that open. So that's, that's, you know, whenever I, I, that detour just, just took me out the way. I mean, so many other people was just complaining about that, but it's, you know, now that the, uh, the bridge is complete, um, and the road is open, I mean, it's, it's a beautiful job. Thank you for what you do. Thank you, your guys, for what they do. Also, uh, the Jackson Road Milling and Paving has been completed. Great job. Kevin, uh, Park and Rec, and, and everybody who had a part in the new light poles on East Washington Street, better known as Fairground Area, I mean, it looks good. Once you cross that railroad track now, with those new poles and those lights, it looks good. You know, that, that tells me and shows me and our citizens that we're moving in the right direction. So thank you for making that happen. Been a long time coming, but thank you for making it happen. My word for the month of May is progress. Forward or onward movement as to an objective or to a goal, and I feel like we're moving forward. And with that, I would say goodnight.
Mr. Mayor, can I get another bite at the apple just real quick?
Can I take a vote? Councilwoman Rector?
Thank you. Um, I, I would, I would be terribly remiss if I didn't thank Robert Lewis and his staff for putting on the Public Works Academy. The stuff that my wife and I learned about what the Public Works does and how it impacts everybody on a day-to-day basis, um, you know, I, I truly look forward to being an ambassador for your department. And people just don't realize how much interaction that they do have with the Public Works Department, and I think you said what, you're now the second-largest department people-wise in, in the city? So anyhow, um, if, what's that?
We'll go for number one.
But anyhow, I, I would encourage anybody, if they do have an opportunity, to attend that academy, because it really is remarkable. One of my big takeaways, and I told one of the other students as we were walking around the last day, we got a complete tour of the facility, which included walking around and seeing all the equipment, and, and I said, you know, one of the big takeaways for me, if I was just a citizen, would be looking at all this equipment and, and realizing that our tax dollars do, do something for us. I mean, that we do get some benefit. The, the snow is removed, the trash is picked up, the potholes are repaired, the detours are set up, the bridges are repaired, uh, and whatnot. So I, I just, just wanna thank you again, Robert, for a very educational four weeks. And I'm done now. Sorry about that, Roger.
Oh, my gosh.
Councilman Fawcett?
Thank you, thank you, John. Thank you very much. I know we're giving Robert a lot of accolades tonight, and he certainly deserves it for all the hard work.
He didn't tell you, just use some of your time.
Yeah, he, but I, guess what? I'm gonna use some of yours now. But anyway, um, I think we had a pretty good night. It kinda, kinda had a few waves in it, but I think echoing on, uh, everybody else here that the transfer of the property over to the Indian, uh, Nansman Indian Nation, I think it's gonna be a, a good thing for us in the long haul. And I'm, I'm like you, I hope maybe they'll, John, that they'll, uh, maybe we'll have a deed ceremony or something, just to make everybody warm and fuzzy with it. You know, I heard Councilwoman Johnson talk about traffic, and some of that traffic that you were encountering the other day
Turned off.
was not the roadway problem. Not a roadway problem. It's a driver, it's a driver problem. It's a driver inattentive problem. That's what most of these accidents are happening right now on our roadways. Not the roadway, roadway conditions are there, but if a driver pulls out and hits a tractor-trailer or a tractor-trailer flips over in the roadway, that's not a roadway problem, that's a driver error problem. That's an incident. We've had people killed over the last few days in these traffic fatalities. Killed, just because they were not doing and being attentive to their driving and their habits are not good. They're not good in Hampton Roads anywhere. You can't ride down any roadway or interstate, you won't get run over by a driver. They're driving kinda nuts. So yes, we do have a transportation issue, and we one day hope that we're gonna, and we're gonna get better. We need a transportation, you know, uh, I think it's in our 2045 plan that we have some kind of a transportation method that we look at for the future, but I think city-wise and what we have, Public Works and, and our city departments and our manager, trying hard to resolve some of these road issues. And everywhere you go in Suffolk right now, there is some kind of construction going on, somewhere. Road construction, Woolcoming, Seventeen, Cretin Road, you know, all these different places. I mean, right, right down here, uh, not too far from here, road construction. Everywhere you go, but that's progress that's being made. So yes, we need a better transportation policy project, whatever, we still gotta have driver attentive, attentiveness to do it. You know, I wanna just say one thing. I heard tonight that we did a proclamation for the National Emergency Medical Services. I was affiliated with that, that, and I know what them guys are doing and gals are doing every day out there, but when you take this one medic that's sitting right across the street on Market Street, that bums out the door and does four-hundred-and-twenty-six runs, and some of those are ALS calls, that's, that's, that's a massive amount of moving, eight, fourteen-hundred-and-eighty-six EMS calls. That is massive. When you couple that with the people doing craziness in the road, I wanna give the fire department a shout-out of an excellent job they did the other day. That was a tragic wreck on, um, over there in front of, um, yeah, can't think of the name of the road now, but anyway, in front of Kroger over there on College Drive. It was a two-car crash. The, the car crashed and it rolled a little bit, and ended up against a pole. The driver was pinned in the car, pinned. The fire department en route, the vehicle caught fire with the vehicle guy trapped inside. Twelve minutes from the time they arrived on the scene, they extricated that guy out of that car without a burn on his body. We have got to understand that these are the most powerful fire and EMS people we have, along with our law enforcement in our city. No question about it. You go and watch them in action, you'll understand it. We have a certain amount of equipment on the north end to handle some of these things, but they also have a rescue truck that comes from Market Street that runs all the way across the city to get to it. But by the time that rescue truck would've got there, the people would've been dead. So I give them all the props in the world how they jump into action and get things done. And not to say that if they pull up there and you're not in a bad situation, they could put blood into your system like right now. No questions asked. So, you know, I'm gonna tell you that it's my fraternity, and I love them. I love public safety. It's my, it's my wheelhouse. You can't fool me on it, I know it. And these guys and gals are cracking it up, doing a great job out there. And not to take away from any other of the city employees, 'cause everybody does a good job, from the top down, everybody does a good job. But, um, we did a good thing tonight, getting that Paul D. Camp, uh, ordinance passed and, and public hearings done, and getting that done, and the developer helping us out, because we can't do it alone. Partnership is important. So I wanna commend everybody tonight also that I think that we took a positive. We didn't do well when it come to, uh, the Paxton Project, but I think it was a little tweak into it. I think that, uh, that it could be a better outcome. So, uh, look forward to seeing y'all on the next meeting. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, work.
I told you, I was gonna take your time, his time, and everybody else's time.
Let me get the good part out first. I'd like to, well, Roger, I'm with you on the fire department, because, uh, I had a little incident at my house. I haven't used my garbage disposal in a long time. My wife called, my daughter called me up and said I was downtown Suffolk, matter of fact, I just, my daughter called me and said, "Dad, smoke is coming out of the sink." I'm saying, "What?" She said, "Smoke is coming out of the sink." I said, "Well, is there any sparks?" She said, "No." I said, "What's, what do, you know, fire can come out the water sink?" But anyway, um, my, my daughter called, and I was talking to her, someone told me to evacuate the house, but she called 911 and they told us to evacuate, and what found out, it was the garbage disposal. So thank you for our good fire department for making sure everything was all right, and I really appreciate that, and that's why I'm being so happy when that firehouse is built right around the corner where I'm at. I'll be talking about that all the time, and thank y'all for doing what y'all do, and my kudos, the people be knowing how to speak on the job that y'all deliver. Recreation, the recreation plan for the summer, it's something that I want, been waiting for a long time in the northern Suffolk, over in our area, that these kids can have things to do. And I think that was a good plan. I'm so happy Mark did this, and, uh, like earlier, when the councilman said, I know it's a lot of work, but it's well worth it for the people of the city of Suffolk. I mean, I'm really happy with that. I'm trying to help any way I can to let the people know about this. I have problems with how people feel, that everybody got one way to find out information, so I'm gonna open my newspaper for that. I mean, I just wanted to make sure the people that I see playing outside ain't nothing to do, and the young people can do something, and some of the old, when they don't have anything to do. So I think, again, thank you again, Mark, for this, one of the best plans I've seen as far as recreation. as far as recreation. I think the city of Suffolk deserved it well. And also, the good, the route schedule, I think that was good to let know that we got all these things going on and people can, and have a possibility of getting to work when we build all these warehouses. And so, that's something that I thought that she already had in plan, but I hope we be a city, we just don't say, but we do it. I hope that happens. And I did talk to Mr. Dove, after we had, after he spoke what he wanted to speak about, but I didn't feel that it was correct, so I had to talk with him. And we had a good conversation. And, you know, like I said, I had somebody with me that knew numbers, status, and studied, and specialized, so it was a good meeting. But we left smiling at each other and saying things that, well, you know, I understand, and he said he understands. So, it was a good meeting. Some of the things he said sound good, but it's not all that. But that's well. And this is the rough part. Sometimes I'm wired different than most. I just don't sit up here and just sit up here and smile and agree. I want to ask a question because this young lady came up, Ms. Townsend came up, and I don't know how she's trying to get a special license for liquor, or that's a procedure you're going to have to do for the walk outside. How's that going? Do you know, Mr. Hughes? Do she have to, is the city in charge of that, or the state? How does, why she haven't got no response yet?
I necessarily speak to the response or the interaction, I'm not aware of that. However, the ABC Board has something called, I believe, called a DORA license.
Right.
That allows you to expand your territory to carry an open container. And it's something that we have been looking at and trying to work through. We've had multiple meetings with ABC, and there's some nuances that I probably couldn't speak to at this moment, but it's something that we have been exploring for the downtown area.
Yeah. I just want to make sure because, you know, I don't like to be a city that when people, you ask them to come up, they sit up here for three hours. If we sit for three hours, they sit for three hours. If they come up and talk, and we don't respond or say anything, that's, they're wasting their time. I, it just gets me when they say that they already called and no response. Only thing we have, I'm not, I'm not aiming at you, Mr. Hughes, I'm just saying, I just like to see we respond to them, good or bad, with response. And when me and you communicate, we do it, Zee, I get some answers, and I appreciate you all. I appreciate that, because I don't have them waiting. And I just don't like when they come up here and say, she's waiting, she waiting, she's doing a proper channel, and still nothing happens. It's not our fault, so I, I just don't see it like that.
We'll close the loop.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. Like I said, it's good that, with the Indian situation, I've been looking for this for years. It's not just saying that it happened on somebody else's watch. I've been looking at this for years. When I was invited to be a part of that commission, I looked forward to that. And maybe now, it might be a little different. Hopefully, we want big things out of all that property. Yes, we do. I mean, you know, to know the history of Virginia, you know that Indians was here. I mean, come on, let's be for real. Celebrate them. We got so many things in Virginia, we don't take, I mean, Suffolk, we don't take advantage of, you know. And sometimes we just overlook that. And when I see other people fight for theirs, and I fight for mine's, and we not trying to get together, let's make it happen together, you know. One ear deaf ear and everybody hear that, but you don't hear what's going on. Everybody to deal with this. So, I just don't put it out like some of you all put it out, but you all know exactly what I mean, and don't know what I'm talking about. Because I sits up here and look and observe, and I just can't sit when I see people doing the right thing and being ignored. And what I'm getting at, my friend, Councilman, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Blue called me several times, and it's almost about a year. He called me several times, and each time I talked to Mr. Blue, there's no, nothing has been done. I'm not stepping on your toes. I want to let you know that whatever you need, I'm with you. If you're trying, no, we got to get that done. This man invested half a million dollars in a community. And other communities who invest like that, if a light bubble out, somebody going to take care of it. I'm just saying, I just, my wire, like, I'm saying, this man then called us to the proper way, come up here, with a whole lot of respect, he's better than me. This man came up here, every time it come up, he professional. We talk about developers. This is our city. We give them the right to build. There's no way we should, a community have to see a lot, and we haven't done nothing in a year about this. I have had a situation like that, and I called my friend, Mr. Hughes, in Harborview. Not only he went and took care of that situation, but he let me know what's going on. So, I don't understand. And I apologize to that family, because I think we are better cities than that. This is there. Why haven't we addressed this? I don't know how the law is, or what can we do. If he got that much money to make that much money in that community, he should be able to pay something. I don't know if do we have to cut the grass, or he be charged with cutting the grass. This stuff is already there. We got to get this done. Let's get it done. I mean, here we go, here go Luwak with attitude. I don't have that attitude. I'm just saying, I feel for these people that comes up here, and we ask them to come up here, and there's no response. A year's a year, that's too long. That's too long. This man shouldn't have to come back up here a year after we know what's going on.
Blue, you don't know what you're talking about.
Oh, okay. I don't know. Well, when the man come up here and said...
The grass has to be cut every so often.
Right.
Okay? And the organization is not doing it.
So who...
Blue, have I talked to you?
But that's not, see, what you just said, okay, what you just said, okay. No, no, what you just said, the grass had to be cut a certain time. So, it must not be cut a certain time, or this man would not be up here.
Just like, Blue.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying you're taking, I'm not saying you're not taking care of people. I'm asking, if I can help, let me know.
Mr. Mayor.
There we go.
Just direct your comments to me.
Mr. Mayor, I just ask, hopefully, that we can get this solved, and they've gone on the whole year. And I trust that...
I think we can look into it. These are, and I know the mayor will look into it, that these are, having been involved in similar circumstances where there's an HOA involved, you know, then that's a private entity, and it requires legal action. That doesn't mean that we can't go through community development and be able to address the larger issues. So, and I think, I mean, I'll go forward to city attorney, I think I'm stating it right, in that things that violate our codes, we can, but when it comes to an HOA issue...
Take a year, Mayor.
Which some of it...
Mr. Mayor, take a year.
I don't know about all that.
That's how much it'd take for that to happen? That's what I'm saying. I'm talking about a year. That takes a year for this to happen?
Well, how about, we just get, you get the city manager to look into it?
You know, I'm just going to say this here. I'm just going to say this here. I sit and listen to people talk, and y'all talk 15, 20 minutes, 30 minutes. But once I start talking more than 10 minutes, we have a problem. And I'm not talking nothing I made up, I'm just talking what the people came in and said. And I want to address you. I'm trying to say, what can we do? That's all I said, man. That's it.
Yeah, just...
No, it's not a time and place, but you take it so long when I ask you that.
I think we'll let the manager handle it.
Well, I don't care. Well, somebody need to handle it. A year? And everybody get all offended when I say this. I don't... God bless.
Okay, I'll go ahead and wrap it up. Mr. Manager, if you could look into this issue, I'm sure you will, and get back to me. And then we'll get rest of the council to see what options we may have to make sure that we're availing of ourselves of any enforcement options that we may have. Go from there. Just a couple of events since our last meeting. I mean, we had the prayer breakfast, the morning following our last council meeting. And as usual, there were a lot of people there, very interesting speaker, Palestinian. Anyhow, another good event. Left with a lot of thoughts going through your head. Followed that up with the Portsmouth State of the City, which was not bad, but they're not going to have anything on us, right, Jennifer? Nah, we're going to be close. I don't think anybody will, really. Be hard to outdo last year, but we're going to be close. Did a walk-through of Bonsecores yesterday, was it yesterday, day before yesterday? Yes, day before yesterday, went to...
Didn't invite anybody but you?
Huh?
Didn't invite anybody but you?
Nope, just the important people.
That's it?
Okay, so, yeah, they, so, yeah, we did a walk-through, just to check the addition out, where they were. They're still about, what, six months out at least, something like that. But it's going to be nice when it's done. Yeah, there's a lot of steel in that building, looks, design is neat, and obviously, they're doing it the right way. I want to congratulate the Nasmith Indian Nation, it's a long time coming. I'm looking at a business plan that was dated January of 2007. So, this process dated '02? No? Long time ago. That was about 17 years ago. So, it's been a long time coming. I'm very satisfied with the MOU and that they were willing to go along with an understanding that they, it'll be a partnership. And I'm confident that that's what it will be, and it'll benefit our citizens in the long run. Before I do record tonight, at the last meeting, we did, at the last meeting, I think we met, we met with Planning Commission, was that the last meeting? Yeah, we met with Planning Commission. I mean, the topic of tweaking came up, as to, I was trying to give some direction as how we might could work with the comp plan, and I suggested we tweak it a little bit. And there was a little confusion over exactly what that meant. So, I took the liberty to look it up in two dictionaries. So, the Cambridge definition of tweak is to change something slightly, especially in order to make it more correct, effective, or suitable. I think you might have confused it with twerking, which is something else. And then the Webster edition is to make usually small adjustments in or to. And so, I like, just wanted to take the opportunity to clarify that for staff and the public. And if we could continue to tweak the comp plan to come to the right conclusion, it would be swell, as the Beaver used to say. I do have, I do have an email, as I like to do, those that I receive from an individual kind of complimenting our Parks and Rec Department. And it's from Mr. Ray Laura. And it is, "I'd like to thank Parks and Rec Department for the great job they're doing at Outdoor Gymnasium located on Shoulders Hill Road. Two weeks ago, I noticed a work crew was cleaning the area around the outdoor gym. They spread two truckloads of topsoil and planted grass seeds. Those seeds are now growing, to my pleasant surprise. Today, four more workers and equipment. We're back at the gym area with two more loads of topsoil and more grass seeds. This is not the largest and most important project in the city. However, as frequent users of this outdoor gym, for me, this is a big deal, and I appreciate the work being done. This work enhances the life of the hundreds of citizens like myself who use this facility many times every week. This is a public service at its very best. By the way, I've never met Mr. Mark Furlough. To me, he is Suffolk number one public servant. He and the staff at Benish Creek Rec Center are doing a fantastic job every day. Kudos to Madison Cutter and Andrea Strayer at the rec center. Mr. Mayor, my warmest regard to you. Thank you all, you and the city staff, do for your community. He says, I have to go use the gym. Sincerely, Ray Laura." So, once again, you know, and when you get one of these, I mean, being in the business that I'm in, you know, if 10 people get upset, you'll hear from nine of them. If 10 people are happy with something, you're lucky if you hear from one. So, my hat's off to the staff as well. And with that, I will go to my quote of the night. Unfortunately, not everybody's in the room, but my quote of the night is one I've used before, but it is absolutely one of my favorites, from Theodore Roosevelt. And that is, "It behooves every man to remember that the work of the critic is of altogether secondary importance, and that, in the end, progress is accomplished by the man who does things." So, with that, I will ask for adjournment. Councilman Williams.
Move.
Motion to adjourn from Councilman Williams. Councilman Fawcett.
Seconded his motion.
Seconded by Councilman Fawcett. I will assume there's no discussion. With that being said, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.